Architectures United.
Race is gonna win.
Race?
I'm not gonna race you.
Hey, I'm not gonna raise the box.
Cause I don't really need to race you. You're so dense. Which kind of pen do you want?
Do you like it in color?
But the blacks aren't.
Pretty black.
Purple.
Okay, um, thank you, Jesse. Make sure you turn on the mic. Red is on. Blank is off. Otherwise, the people online aren't able to. Yeah, generally talking to it. You don't need to be like right on it, but. Talking this way, it's microphone over there isn't supposed to affect it. I don't think that's my thing, but.
Where are the new fancy wireless ones?
We're gonna work you up to those.
I've already used it. We're gonna, we're not sure.
We trust everybody in this room, Josh.
Oh, it's Candace. I see. Okay. No, they're in the back. We just haven't eaten them yet.
You have to like have it right in your mouth. You have to be eating them then.
Well, we are good to go. If you guys are ready, I'm gonna do my best K impression tonight. Oh, jeez.
All right, well, with that, let's uh call to order. It is seven oh two P M on June twenty seventh. Jared, would you like to do roll call, please?
I would love to. Cindy Suplesio?
Here.
Shown?
Here.
Candice Hart?
Here.
Jessie Garcia?
Here.
Jared Mark?
Here.
Jay Inkstrom?
Here.
Nicholas DeFrank?
Present.
Jeff Davlin is absent. Kim McGee is absent.
Beautiful. Thank you, Jared. And with that, I guess I'd like to say congratulations to both Jessie and Candace for joining the commission. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Uh, well, so then we can just move on to the first item is approval of minutes from the June thirteenth meeting, which I was not at. But were there any questions regarding the minutes? Pretty quick.
No questions.
We uh thanked you.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Those are real tough ones.
Would anybody make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Jared made the motion and Nick sec- seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, which now we can move on to the action. Or no, wait, we have, we got a public comment for persons not on the agenda. So is anybody here to, anybody here to discuss anything that's not on the uh, not on the agenda? I think you guys are all here for agenda items. Do we have anybody on the call? No. With that, we can just move on to the action items then. Which the first one is for a special use permit for Ragged Mountain Sports. And this one, Ellie, you're doing this one. All right. Oh, yeah.
All right, so Ragged Mountain Sports has been there for a little over two years or a lot over two years, actually. And um, we, it came to our attention because there were some building code issues in the building. Um, and we just wanted to bring that up to code. And so Tracy's been working with us specifically for this one, which is, um, it's a retail store operated in industrial zone building, which requires a special use permit if it's under ten thousand square feet. Over ten thousand square feet, interestingly, is only a conditional use permit. Don't know why, but. So the purpose of the general industrial district in its purpose statement says that the district also allows supporting uses such as retail sales. And let's see. It also has adequate parking. We know this because it's been operating there and there's been no issues with parking so far. They have the required number of off-street parking spaces, which is shared with the other tenants in the building. But then there are also additional on-street parking spots on Nislanic Avenue, which are pretty much only used by that building because the property on the other side is fenced off. So it doesn't really use that. So it has good parking and yeah, we recommend to approve the special use permit.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ellie.
Anything I missed?
You got it.
All right.
Yeah, this is a, this one seems pretty, pretty straightforward. Do we have any uh, are there any questions for Ellie or staff?
No. No.
Let's see, the applicants, do you guys have anything you wanna share? Or are you guys just here to see what happens, I suppose? Is there anything you wanna say or?
I can share.
Uh, if you could go to the mic, that'd be great.
And we do have Tracy online who's the building owner.
Oh.
Any other questions?
Okay, awesome. Hi, Tracy.
Hey, Tracy. Um, my name is Asia Weinold. I don't have much to add. We've been in this space since twenty twenty one and we haven't had an issue with parking or anything else to my knowledge. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the special use permit because I didn't know. But I know you've been working with Tracy and we're obviously happy to cooperate however we need.
That's awesome. Thank you, Asia. I'm guessing no questions for the applicant?
None.
None?
None.
Any discussion? Obviously, yeah. Mm-hmm. I mean.
Pretty straightforward.
Any portion of, I think our time where we're seeing positive retail uses, positive, you know, people, you know, getting into spaces, um, doing what they can for our, you know, like, community, but tax base. While doing it safely, I, I think the code piece, you know, I don't really know there's a hiccup there, but it's hard to see any real problems with this.
Right. Is this something that we should just be removing from the code as a requirement? Like, I, I don't know. I just feel like we wanna encourage retail as much as we can.
Yeah.
And it's like if they see, oh, I have to get a special use permit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's obviously not a decision you guys can make tonight. But I, I do think it's very um, interesting that the small retail spaces require a more Yeah. onerous process than the large retail spaces.
Yeah.
I would think it would be flipped where, you know, maybe it's a conditional use permit. It's a staff review for the small spaces and um, because they tend to have less of those external issues than the larger spaces. And so, you know, I think the next time we're in the kind of use table, it could be something we, we clean up at that point. But um, you know, I would say we probably don't have too many instances of retail establishments in the industrial zone district. This isn't common in other zone districts in town. So it really just is unique to the industrial zone district.
Sure.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Uh, very.
Yeah, I, I do think it should be flipped. Just using Ragged as a, as an example, right? They were forced to move and then they moved again. So we should definitely bring up.
Yeah, and I just hope this wasn't expensive for you guys to go through the process or anything. But yeah, okay. Good to hear. Well, then I, I mean, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, I will move to approve the special use permit for the operation of a retail facility located at eight two six highway one thirty-three here in Carbondale.
Second.
All right, Nicholas made the motion and Jared seconded that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
Great.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I'm just really excited that it moved closer to my house again.
You what?
I'm just excited that it moved closer to my house.
I have another question.
Of course.
Um, I guess comment, I don't know. Do you think that maybe it's written that way? Because if, if a small space, it needs a lot of parking spots like to have the evaluation? Just like as we move into that, whenever that comes up in the future?
You know, I, we, we, if we were, we'd probably kind of look back and see at what point did this change in the code? Is it just kind of been a historic use? And that's how it's historically been treated before the U D C? Or is it something that was added during the U D C? I, I do think that maybe, you know, there's kind of two sides of it. One, the um, smaller spaces, you know, there might be more incompatibility with what's around it. Whereas a larger retail space might kind of more dominate buildings. And so you get more single-use structures.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
But on the flip side, the larger businesses are gonna have more kind of delivery, retail kind of interactions and have more kind of external impacts. Whereas the smaller uses probably aren't gonna have the big semis coming in, delivering supplies on a routine basis. And so, yeah, it's, I, I can see kind of some benefits and cons to each one of the two processes for each of the two sizes and how we split them out.
Thank you.
Is this just for industrial? Is it for light industrial too?
We don't have a light industrial, so it's just our industrial zone district. Our mixed use, our um, other commercial warehouse, retail zone districts, they all allow. Retail, I believe, is a use by right in each one of them.
Right, okay. So then, I'm just thinking about the, I don't know, you know, that's still industrial currently, right? We'd have to rezone. Am I thinking correctly?
Oh, the whole downtown north area?
Yeah, the Dono.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that when that would get developed.
Cause that would impact businesses, yeah.
Yeah.
It takes us a long time to come to a decision. We're ends.
Well, uh, we ready to move on to the next action item? All right, next one is subdivision exemption and variance for one ninety-five South Fourth Street. And Jared, this one's you.
So, um, before you guys sign, it's a combined application for subdivision exemption and variance. Um, and so typically in Carbondale, variances would be heard by the Board of Adjustments. Historically, when those variances have been combined with other land use applications, they've been um, heard by whomever that uh, review authority is. And so in this case, subdivision exemptions are heard by the um, by the Planning Zoning Commission. In other situations where there's been rezonings as well as major site plans, they've been heard by the Board of Trustees. And so just wanted to kind of provide you guys with that context as to why you're reviewing both the subdivision exemption and the variance. And so essentially, you know, I'll let Bob and, and the applicant team really get into the, the meat of the application. But essentially, it's, they wanna take four existing town lots, separate into two new lots of record for um, both zone residential low density. The um, the, the subdivision exemption largely meets all of the code requirements for a residential low-density zoned property within the original town site zone district. So we have narrower lot, lot width requirements and smaller lot area requirements for those old town lots, as well as those in the Weaver addition, where we require slightly larger lots for residential low-density elsewhere in town. The one area where the project does not meet the um, requirements is with regards to setbacks. And that's largely due to the existing structure's location on the site, its proximity to the new lot line, um, creating the two new lots, as well as its proximity to Euclid Ave, where there's kind of the front wall and bay window. And so the request um, before you tonight is to approve a variance to allow a reduced side yard setback on Lot A and a reduced side street setback to allow the existing building to largely remain where it is. There are some modifications to the existing structure, removing some additions, decks, things like that. And then in addition, the applicant's proposing an increased setback through a platted building envelope on Lot B. Um, and so generally speaking, um, we've kind of provided analysis. Generally speaking, the application meets all of the code requirements. The one thing that I would like to note is with variances, there's a requirement to find that each one of the review criteria are being met. One of those is um, with regard to a hardship. And in this case, um, our code allows hardships to be granted, an exception to the hardship criteria to be granted if the owner or applicant um, has built or placed the structure prior to subdivision or zoning regulations. And so largely, I think we think that the original structure was largely placed there well before our current zoning and subdivision regulations existed and even prior versions of that current zoning. So um, what we've provided for you guys tonight is a um, resolution. Capturing this, we are recommending approval of Resolution One, Series twenty twenty-four. And um, that resolution contains a number of conditions that kind of address some of staff's concerns, such as restrictions on new permits being issued on Lot B, the newly created lot, until some of the issues with Lot A are addressed. As well as um, some building code requirements related to um, proximity of existing structures to property lines, dedication of a ditch easement um, for the existing ditch on the west side of Lot B and to capture the variances. One thing I do wanna highlight with the condition about the variances is how we've crafted that is the variances exist for the existing structure. But if that structure is significantly altered or demolished, how we've written this condition is that variance would go away. The property would revert back to the standard setbacks for the zone district that exists at that time. And the applicant would be permitted to submit a um, subdivision exemption application to remove the building envelope on B and essentially return both lots to the zone district's standard setbacks. Uh, that, that's really it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Just a quick clarification, Jared, sorry. I'm not sure if I understood. So if the existing structure on A. Correct, I'm correct. If that gets demolished, then it, it basically wipes the slate of, for both A and B, the new, call them mini lots, to just, that, that's, that's the reversion you're talking about. That's correct. Okay. Correct. Just due to how this is set up, the only caveat would be the building envelope on B would take additional action to re, to remove the platted building envelope. But we're putting it in its resolution that that's permitted. So future uses could um, all recognize that that was part of the decision at this time and support that. Right. But the, but the two lots would, well, if approved, the two lots would remain intact if the building was removed. Correct.
I, I have a, just a question about, so the existing building, has, has the uh, the area that's hanging into the neighboring property, has that been removed already or is that still there?
No, so there's been no changes to the existing structure. And that is condition one of the resolution was attempted to capture that, that those portions would have to be removed before the
Okay.
approval of any building permit on Lot B.
I did, too. I was actually looking for it and I didn't see it.
For, should be page one of Resolution One. That first condition at the bottom.
Can I ask a question?
Which I believe, yep, which I believe is attachment C.
And I'm new to the meeting, so if I'm going too far ahead, let me know. Um, is, is now time to talk about what they're proposing to do on the lots?
I would wait till after the applicant kind of presents theirs and they would probably be better able to answer that.
Neither.
There was no resolution in effect.
Did that not get?
Did not.
Attached?
That's why it was so confused.
Yeah.
What does it do with it?
Yeah. I blame Ellie.
I was going to ask that question and you answered it, so.
I was, I was searching through trying to understand what would happen with that remnant piece of building that was all of a sudden there and then not there. Now I know.
Did you guys not get that?
Sorry?
You guys did not get that either?
Well, guys, again, now we're all screwed. We can put it up on the screen. Want me to stop sharing, Jared?
Yeah, I would have to log in real fast, but um, yes, if you wouldn't mind. Sorry about that, guys.
No, you're fine.
Right for the details of what got us from one of the others.
Little important.
Should we take five and print it out?
Would you guys prefer a printed copy?
I mean, I think we can all just read, if we read it aloud.
I just emailed it to everybody and I copied you on that email, Bob. Sorry about that, everybody.
Human.
First mistake I've ever made in the last twenty-three minutes. I just got it in the email I sent, so you guys should be.
Okay, so then.
Apologies on that. So yeah, so resolution number one, that's kind of what I'm asking you guys to approve. Includes all the findings, um, includes the conditions. And so there's seven conditions of approval. The first one being um, a building permit would remove portions of the existing structure on Lot A from Lot B and from the side setback. And that kind of is captured in the um, the proposed plat and what um, and kind of where that proposed new structure is the, the kind of footprint of that. Condition number two discusses removing the existing garage and cellar on Lot B from uh, it should be removed or relocated. Currently, those are outside of the building setback on Lot B. And so they either need to be removed fully within the building setback or removed completely from site. Condition number three discusses um, that exterior walls and projections less than five feet from the property line being required to be one-hour fire-resistant rated pursuant to the building code. Condition number four discusses that the um, subdivision exemption plat will be revised to dedicated ditch easement. And that's essentially for the portion of Lot B from the Lot B property line to the Lot B building setback. Then five discusses those variances, how um, they're existing only for the existing structure on Lot A and don't addition, permit additional encroachments. In addition, if the structure's demolished or altered in any way that removes the building encroachments, the lot would revert back to a standard setback. So for example, if the bay window facing Euclid is removed and there's no longer a building encroachment, that would just revert back to the ten-foot building setback there. If the building's altered enough on the side setback, which I don't envision, but if it is and it's now seven and a half feet from the property line, then that variance would go away and the building would be restricted to the seven and a half foot setbacks.
So these are like active setback lines, like with development.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I guess, um, and I guess where I'm getting caught up on this a little bit is that, so we're with this subdivision, we are actually dedicating pretty much the, the building envelope uh, with these setbacks. And that, so we're, we're actually creating a setback, we're gonna be showing a setback line now on the drawing where the existing building is outside of it. So we're, we're approving something, uh, we're approving a setback with a building.
Encroaching it.
Yeah.
Correct. And, and the rationale being um, the applicant, and I'll let you guys speak to this, but the applicant did not wanna pursue a building permit to remove a significant portion of that existing building unless they knew they had the plat and, or the approval in place. So I guess there's, there's two ways. We could say the subdivision exemption plat is not approved and cannot be recorded until after those uh, modifications are made and that building footprint is outside of those setbacks. Or we could say those changes aren't, the, the subdivision exemption is approved, but no building permits can be issued other than those to remedy the um, encroachment. And so it would basically tie the hands of Lot B, but allow the applicant the opportunity to start moving forward.
Okay. Interesting. Makes sense. I'm coming around to it.
So I have a quick question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
And this is a question for town staff. Would Lot B get its own address separate from Lot A? Or be applicable for a new address separate from Lot A?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my question, too. Are we talking about two different owners?
It could be, correct. And so it's a completely new parcel. It would be able to be owned, sold, transferred, developed in, in and of its own.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, none of that can happen until the demo.
So, so in theory, um, nothing can be built on Lot B until the demo occurs on Lot A.
But you could sell.
But as the condition's written, you could sell the property.
Wouldn't that even be a potential future buyer at that point?
That would. And so I think um, it might be pertinent to consider a condition that says Lot B can't be transferred as well. Can't be sold or um, transferred from the current owners until that situation's remedied as well on Lot A.
I mean, I would assume that the real estate agent would like find that information and pass it along to the buyer, I would hope.
Yeah, that's a disclosure.
That's a disclosure. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know who would buy a property that was dependent on the neighbor tearing down their house, a portion of their house to
Right.
develop, so. In a way, I don't necessarily see it necessary as a condition, but at the same time, if it is a way that's just preventing a mess of potential legal issues.
Certain plumbing is true.
Which, I mean, I guess we can ask the applicant here in a few, once they, once they talk through everything and we can see if that's something that they're open with, so. Do we have any other questions for staff or?
You guys addressed exactly what I was gonna bring up, which is why I put that on the new land owner. So you don't have uh, you know, issues down the road, you know? So, thank you.
Jared, can you explain the, the ditch easement again for me real quick?
Yeah, so there's currently a ditch located um, right along the current properties, west boundary. And it kind of snakes as it comes to Euclid Ave through the front corner. And um, likely there's a um, prescriptive easement that exists, given the ditch has been there. The town's request is just that the ditch be formally put into an easement since we're going through a uh, a subdivision process that allows the town to um, maintain that ditch, access that ditch. a subdivision process that allows the town to um, maintain that ditch, access that ditch in perpetuity.
Right. And so and then I'm, I'm just a little confused on how Lot A would still be able to access that ditch or have anything to do with that ditch. I don't see any like documentation that really provides that. It would just be solely then on Lot B. So I'm, I'm wondering, is there like a loss of um access to that or?
I mean, yes, the the ditch could be written in a way that Lot A has access to the ditch, but but the the goal for the town is that the town can maintain that ditch um, less that it's going to impact Lot A. Now Lot A may or may not have rights to use that ditch for say outdoor irrigation purposes.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
And that's more of a private matter between, you know, for for the current property owner, kind of if they wanna
That's what I wanted to.
Update the ditch easement to say that, you know, Lot A could run irrigation from that ditch.
That's not in our purview. That's per owner.
I believe so. Our uh, public works director didn't request that that also be um, that ditch also be uh, for the benefit of Lot A. So.
Yeah, it's a, it's a public or it's, it's an easement for a public utility, pretty much.
Yeah.
When alternately, if they were, they could plat on this, which I would actually recommend that you guys do that. Uh, an easement that runs from B to A that allows for A to use at least a water line that would, an irrigation pump could run through the property.
That's exactly what I was trying to get at, because I just.
But I think that, I think that's an option. Like that's something that they could apply for if they wanted. They could, they could plat that. They don't even have to do that now. They could do that later.
Great.
As an agreement between the two properties.
Yep.
So.
And that was the understanding I was trying to get. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Um, any other questions for staff?
No.
No. Cindy, you good up there?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, just making sure. Well, with that, I guess uh, the applicant. Hey, guys.
Hi. I'm Bob Schultz, the founder on the project. Jeff Dickinson is the architect. Randall Morris is the owner of uh, one ninety-five Fourth Street. We're here to uh, talk about the conver- the, the uh, subdivision that Jared has introduced. This is a picture of the property uh, from uh, Fourth Street looking to the west. For clarity sake, you see Fourth Street running north and south and Euclid running east and west. It's that corner lot that uh, sits at the corner of Euclid and Fourth. The uh, the area uh, around it, um, the original town site, this was four lots. And um, in general, the uh subdivision exemption process is intended to be the simplest of the subdivision processes because we kind of encourage these kind of uh proposals. And then there's a subsection of that around the projects that are within the original town site that tries to make it even a little bit easier because it deals with this variance issue and gives you a way around uh, dealing with the criteria that are difficult to various. So on this drawing, you can see the existing house. There's some part of it that's old. And um, I'm sure as the remodel goes, we'll uh, be able to establish exactly what that is, but it's not the part that's being removed off of the western side of the property that was a much later addition that may have been somewhere in the fifties or sixties or somewhere in that era. And then there's also another non, a non, a old uh addition to it on the northern edge of the property. The dash lines that you see running north and south here are those old town site uh lot lines. And so uh, there's a, there's a portion of the, of the current house that you see that goes out to that that second uh town site lot line. And that's the part that would be removed and it would go back to the basis of the house. And then we would do the setback from there. So the idea was, is there a way that we can save some portion of this old house and reuse it without uh, having to demolish it in order to do a lot split? So that's kind of the background on it. In terms of the uh, assessor record, it says nineteen hundred. I know, yeah, those of you who follow carbon dam historic records, there's a few dates that the assessor picks and just assigns the properties when he doesn't know when they were built. I'm unaware of any study of this uh property. Most of the work that's been done today has been in the historic commercial core zone district, so we really don't know much uh about, about this property. And of course, the zoning is residential low density. So the idea uh, was to do what I think the uh code and the town plan are encouraging people to do, which is allow for a, a lot split. The code requires fifty-five hundred square feet. This lot, uh each one would be fifty by a hundred and ten. That fifty-five hundred square feet is not a random number. There's a lot of lots out there that are fifty or a hundred or a hundred and fifty by a hundred and ten. So that's why in this zone district and the old part of town, it's uh, it's fifty-five hundred instead of six thousand square feet, which is in the newer uh sections of town for a minimum lot size. The idea of setback, as I understand it is, we're trying to create separation between buildings. Goes back to the original zoning, getting fresh air, sunlight and so forth and in between buildings. Today, we think a lot about fire and having the ability for a firefighter to get in and out of there. And um, so we wanted to try and achieve the fifteen feet that the code is after. It wants seven and a half feet on each side. Well, if we're going to leave the original part of the building there, we can't get seven and a half feet. So we just add it on to the setback on Lot B, so that you still have the fifteen feet. So for anybody walking past and has an aesthetic about fifteen feet separation, that aesthetic will be achieved for air, sunlight, all the things that a lot that we create setbacks to achieve, it achieves all of, all of those uh goals. In the context of where this lot sits, directly to the west of it is a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot with a triplex on it. Beyond that are the uh Mount Soperis townhomes that are across from Soperis Park. To the north, it is uh, a historic house with a ADU in it on a sixty-eight hundred and seventy-five square foot lot. Beside that is the Aces duplex, which is uh on a sixty-eight hundred and seventy-five square foot lot. Across uh Fourth Street, there are three single family lots that are across from Randall's property that range from uh, a little less than thirty-five hundred square feet to more uh larger sized lots. You can uh see those in the, in the previous drawing. The public utilities are in place. Uh, there is water and sewer going right there. There's electricity. And uh, it's consistent with the uses that are in the area. There's public access from both the north and the south to each of these lots. There's an alley that's directly to the north. And of course, Euclid Street to the south. The uh, the easier process, the, the uh, the, the easement process uh is for properties that have three lots or less. So there's less than three lots on those. It meets the size, it's residential, it matches the grid, and there's been no previous subdivision exemption on this property. So it qualifies on all of those. In addition, there's another section of the code that Jared referenced and I spoke about a minute ago that addresses these buildings that have been here a long time and when everybody had huge lots, you thought about where to place a house a lot different than we do today. And so you just kind of flopped it and often put a ring of trees around it for a windbreak and it was just a different world than the, the one that we live in today. So rather than try and get all the horses, the houses knocked down that are from that era, we try and work around and see whether we can keep some uh semblance of that old pattern. The uh, the end result is that there are two lots that meet the uh zone district standards with the exception that we've got the, the variance on the front where the bay window is on the Euclid side and the what we're doing in between the lots to make it so that there's fifteen feet between buildings. The, the thing that we would ask you to consider from uh Jared's requests is condition three, I believe it is. It talks about the building permit and the one hour fire rating. We'd like a chance to work with the building official and, and uh, address that in another way. And we think that it's appropriate maybe not to be trying to enforce the building code in this context and give us a chance to work with fire district. But so once again, the, the, the five feet from the property line is to give ten feet between structures, my understanding. And that gets you, the firemen can get in and out. That's their minimum, uh what they want to be able to navigate that setting. We're going to have fifteen feet. The building official may at the end of the day say but we'd like a chance to at least make the argument before we observe the cost of a one hour fire rating. There is no design yet. So we don't have a, a drawing to take to Aaron. So we, we have to go do that drawing and then go meet with Aaron and say, and uh, build a vet and, you know, just say, is this reasonable? And if it is, great. If it isn't, all right, well, then we're going to do a one hour fire rating. But uh, we think that, that's an appropriate way to deal with this. Uh, at the end of the day, the chief building official is going to make the call. Look with whatever it is he says. So that is uh, that's the extent. In terms of some of the things that uh, that I heard, I hope this clarifies a little bit about the uh setbacks between the two lots, the relationship between the lots. Randall would go in and do his work on the existing house. And then uh, that's the point at which uh Lot Two becomes a lot that can have something built on it. You could just go out there today uh, or upon approval and recordation of this and, and try and do something on Lot Two. The work has to occur that is represented in that plat drawing. If the setbacks let the town know that what can and can't happen there in the future. And uh, so we feel like the town is not out anything in, in this particular situation and it, and it allows us to try and preserve a building that we don't know a lot about, but other than it's old and there's some value in uh trying to work with old buildings. If you can, sometimes you can't, then you have to do what you have to do. So that's uh, that's pretty much where we see the thing at. Be glad to answer uh questions. The other thing about an easement for irrigation, the other thing, thing a person on Lot A could do is use either the alley or the Euclid right away to get a uh line from the ditch. There's actually a pretty good place that's in the, the town right away or on the edge of the alley that someone could run it up there. You know, not going to fall on our sword over this issue, but there is a way that people can get water out of that ditch. As you notice from the drawing, it kind of takes an eastern turn as it gets to Euclid. And that would be a way uh, to deal with that issue without further encumbering the property and having the potential for future neighbor disagreement about the size of the, the box for the pump or something like that. That can all be as a practical matter, you hope the neighbors will just say, let's just share a pump and share a line and but who knows what the future holds.
Right.
And as far as the uh easement for the ditch, yeah, that's all makes sense and.
Um, which I, I did want to just get a um, a check with you guys, because we were discussing, you know, kind of an agreement that uh, or a condition, I suppose, that then Lot B could not be sold until uh, the improvements were done to the house on Lot A, just to prevent any sort of legal issues? Is that something that you guys are open to or do you find that is a hindrance?
I'm sorry, I was answering your questions for gentlemen.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, it's just uh, we, we had been discussing about uh, of the selling of Lot B. We were just gonna, we just want, I'm, I'm just curious if you guys are open to a condition that would say uh, that you cannot sell Lot B until the improvements are done to Lot A just to prevent any sort of legal issues with the building of property on Lot B after selling the property. Does that make sense?
I think what Jay's trying to say is the, the extension that currently overhangs this split or where the future split would be, that um, we would like to discuss with you the idea of a condition being placed that Lot B could not be sold or moved forward on until that extension, which is out of date were removed in that house and that Lot A came into compliance as far as its setbacks are concerned.
I'm, I'm thinking about futures.
Yeah, yeah.
When the one that Jared proposed, I went through the futures of that and I saw how it could be okay. And one of the things we had to think about that often when we're on that side of the table, we don't have to is the ability to finance property and to take out a loan on it. And so we're affecting the thing that you want to prevent has potential value for a banker who's making a loan on the property. And so I just need a minute to kind of think through that. Maybe we can talk about something else while I
Yeah.
My brain kind of works through that.
Totally.
Those kind of things
I.
lenders anxious.
Yeah, sure. So you're, you guys are talking about moving the conditions and uh, from one and two, instead of building permit, it's from sale.
Well, it would be more that um, you, you wouldn't be able to pull a per- the thing is, is with this first condition saying that you can't pull a permit on Lot B until Lot A has done the improvements.
Right.
So we just want to make sure that Lot B doesn't get sold. And then they actually can't even pull a permit because Lot A has they never took, they never demoed that portion of the property that is
Basically, they're trying to make Lot A clean before anything on Lot B can move forward.
Yeah.
Do a very simple way and, and perhaps where there might be some sort of financial implication of that. I think just as far as like a policy or um, looking at the parcel, just getting it, getting its ducks in a row.
Right.
Prior to movement on parcel B.
Is it a, is it something that we could do like within X amount of days of bill of sale? You know, instead of prior to sale?
What would the advantage be?
Uh, that would allow financial uh cushion for Lot A to make those improvements. It would not impose a hardship, but it would um, it'd be a lot easier for Lot A to make those improve uh, improvements before.
Is the idea that, that the loss of square footage would impact uh, a loan? Or is it the demo would impact the loan of, or, or, I guess, I guess I'm not understanding. I, I hear what you're saying about, I'm not understanding how that would provide a the impact on, on financing, I guess.
The lender doesn't have any recourse on Lot B then. So in terms of what they can lend on that property, they have to eliminate that value for Lot B. So for Randall to do the uh loan for the renovations and ultimately to do the uh, new house on Lot B, there has to be enough value there. Uh, but I'm trying to think through, I understand what you're trying to get to.
Yeah.
And I want to get there too. And just that one's a little bit of concern for me just because of how properties are valued and then what amount they're willing to lend based on that valuation.
Oh, so Randall, uh, you are, you say the, the plan is to develop Lot B yourself. That, that, that wouldn't be sold as
Right.
A lot to be just as a paper lot. A lot to be just as a paper lot, it would be developed. Okay.
Doesn't matter if you put it in because you're developing it, you're not selling it.
Potentially.
Unless he's trying to get a a construction loan.
Yeah.
This holds him up because of the can, the verbiage that we would be adding, so.
But but we as a recommendation kind of, if you choose to change your mind, it could put, it could create a controversy.
But if somebody can't pull a building permit on lot B, what's the controversy? But where is the issue that we're trying to address?
I guess we just wanna make sure that lot B doesn't get sold and that it can't be developed because lot A hasn't done these updates yet. Which I mean, for the most part, it's not that big of a concern, just because, I mean. That's definitely the due diligence of the selling of a property. But you know, we just wanna make sure that there's not uh some weird legal issue down the road because of something that was overlooked.
I think, if I may, I think similar to kind of the irrigation conversation we had. You know, the last thing we wanna do is introduce additional neighbor disputes. Or potential lawsuits if, you know, lot B is sold and the work on lot A hasn't commenced or been completed. So I think, you know, it's it's, there there's some similarities there of the goal trying to be. Not knowingly go into something and create potential neighborly disputes or lawsuits or whatever those might be by allowing the property to be sold. Um, until it's ready to be developed.
While without disclosing. They can build on it if this wasn't done, then that would be, you'd be walking into a bustle. If you tried to sell a lot and not tell the new owner that, oh, by the way. You can't build.
Right.
For what it's worth, I would, I would prefer to live on lot B.
And and just to be frank, I mean, I really appreciate this application. I think this is good for our town, I think it's a a good, a great request. I think just, just like you are turning your gears, Bob, uh, I I think personally, or we're trying to turn gears. Just to make this a very clean process, to set a solid precedent and to into to work. I I personally would love to work with this one and make it, make it happen. Uh, I think it's good on so many levels, you know, I mean, it's it's so, to me, just like to Jared's point. These two little minor encumbrances uh kind of leave it in kind of this this icky space where it's not a kind of, not so much a level field between the two lots. At at the culmination of of this process here. And so I'm just trying to understand if we can get there, sets a good precedent, keeps things clean. And and it's it's a great, a great application, a great project hopefully for you. So that's, so not meaning to 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 bring any kind of big darkness over, I think it's a a small item and hopefully. It 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 wouldn't impact your your future vision and in your hopes, but we don't know what that is, or then that can change. You know, things, things can change is with respect to that, the the potential of that. I just wanted to to kind of look, I think, at these details.
How about, how about you guys, um, I don't know, if you guys wanna just chat for a little bit, we can, we can talk about, um, since you, we're discussing number three. With that condition, we can chat about that one for a little bit and kind of see how we're all feeling about that condition. Um, if, you know, it gives you a little bit of time to chat a little bit.
Could use a few minutes.
Yeah.
This is a.
Totally, totally understand.
Yep.
Public hearing as well.
Oh, you're right, it is a public hearing, yeah, so with that, uh, we can open it up to public comment, which. Is there anybody on the call?
We're doing our best K impression. No, we have nobody else online.
Anybody make, anybody willing to make a motion?
A motion to close. Comment.
Second. So then, yeah, I guess.
See you in a few minutes.
Yeah. Go ahead and chat and then, um, sorry. Oh, right, yeah, for sure. And Nick, Cindy, you both heard, uh, Bob mentioned about the number three. On the uh conditions, which you, did you guys get that in your email? Did you guys have a chance to look at that?
I got it, I got it.
Okay, cuz yeah, I was kinda, kinda on the spot there, but I mean, really, it's pretty much just saying that it's requesting that anything within. Uh, five feet from the property line is required to have a one hour fire rated.
Right.
Wall.
And that's a building department's issue, I don't think, I don't think planning and zoning necessarily needs to weigh in on that, I'm okay with it.
I would agree with Nick on that.
I mean, I. Jesse, what do you think?
I'm gonna make the recommendation and it sounded like Bob mentioned it, that they get the opinion of the fire marshal. Just to give that opportunity to the new homeowner, uh, seen a lot of structure to structure ignition. So with as much vegetation as that area has or could potentially have. I think Bob did mention that he was gonna reach out to the uh local fire authority to. To make sure that they, what they're proposing would meet their requirements, um, so I would support that.
Can I just, a point of order, I mean, I, we thought you were calling a recess, so we could, the applicant has left the room now.
Certainly, we can.
I think you should be in recess right now.
Oh, okay.
Not discussing something that they need to comment on.
We'll, we'll pause.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll be quick.
Okay.
Little misunderstanding, you said we're gonna discuss three and they said yes, but.
Yeah, but he's right, I actually think that's the law, they have to be in the room if we're deliberating.
It's okay, so I think it's worth just restating those when they get back into.
Yeah.
The meeting room.
If he was Bill Gavett though, that's retired. Better, he better reassess the Carl factor.
Well, I guess, should we just take a five minute?
Yeah, I think, um, that's fine, sure. Sorry about not getting that, I don't know what, there's another attachment that was not included as well, so.
There's another one.
Um, it was just a brief map showing where the structures merits were adjacent to this. And so I don't know what happened.
It felt like this diligent. I'm I'm actually glad, I mean, it's it's accidents happen, I literally was like, just, I thought I was going crazy.
I did too, I started scrolling and I saw.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you guys saying that, cuz I'm like, yeah, yeah, it's. It was page one, it's.
I started scrolling into.
Condition.
I thought I was missing something cuz I started seeing like community housing like highlighted, what the, what did I miss?
It's, it's not the first time I've had this issue with diligent, sometimes just the way documents get uploaded. Sometimes they don't get fully attached. But no, no, it's, it's, I still should be checking, Kay's not here and Ellie's fault and.
Nobody's checking my work.
How was Havesu?
It was really good.
Was there five million people or was there?
Um, I think the threat of norovirus turned a lot of people away.
Was there a threat of norovirus?
Um, apparently, like a week to two weeks before we got there, there was. Baker's dozen to two dozen cases of norovirus.
Down there.
Down there at the campsite.
Oh, wow.
And when we got there.
You didn't see it.
There was no signs of norovirus. Um, people are also being very diligent with wearing, you know, gloves when they're using latrines and spraying bleach. Everywhere, and so I think there was a uh renewed. Renewed commitment to cleanliness when camping.
Got it.
What I noticed is the the hike, it's, you know, it's ten miles, it's in the Grand Canyon, but they also have mules. That you can hire to carry your gear down. And if you really wanna put a lot of effort in, you can also pay for the helicopter to bring you right down. And so I think there's a lot of people who do this who, um, it could be the first time they've stepped outdoors in their life. Or, um, you know, like literally, we would see. Walmart tents still in the boxes that they purchased them from. People like wheelbarrying it less than fifty yards from where the mules drop the stuff off to a campsite. And then having their neighbors teach them how to set up a tent. Like literally, you got the, you know, how to set this up, you know, piece of paper and so. Yeah, and then on the flip side, you have people who have been backpacking a ton, and so it's a very, um. Yes, eclectic, it's a very inclusive camping experience. But it was beautiful and the ninety-five to one hundred and ten degree weather every day was just lovely.
Did you go to the confluence, Jared?
No, we hiked down to Beaver Falls.
Beaver, okay.
Um, we got kind of a late start, I think our group as a whole was sick of waking up at like two to four AM to hike. And so, um, it was like a hundred and ten that day that we were going to hike. And so anytime you weren't in the water was, um, really not that much fun.
Yeah.
So we got there and we're just like, you know what, we're just gonna hang out here at this falls and, uh, our one friend decided to fill up some water. He ran like another mile, mile and a half down towards the confluence and back and.
Yeah.
He came back and he looked worse for wear, so I think the rest of us were pretty happy with our decision. Uh, we had a group of seven.
How far were you camping from the falls?
So we were some of the last sites above Mooney Falls. So you pat, you hike past, hike through Supai and then you pass fifty foot falls and Navajo Falls. And then Havasu Falls and then there's the campground. And so we were ten campsites above Mooney Falls, which is the steep. Kind of rock climb-y hike down. Yeah, it was, it was awesome, we had a ton of fun. And cell phones don't work down there, so that was lovely.
We hiked from the river up.
Yeah.
And we're hiking up it.
Nice.
Got chased back to the rapid on by a big one. We were all on the other side just watching.
I assume you guys didn't get all the way up to Beaver Falls or anything like that, yeah. Yeah, we were hanging there and we saw a a bighorn sheep kind of come down the rock face and started trying to climb up another one and. Had a few misplacements on its foot, so like it took like three or four tries to get up this rock wall. But just amazing watching those things.
Right.
Climb these rock walls, it's.
My dad and I almost got saved by. And we noticed each other like at the same time, they were just like, fuck. And we just happened to be in their way and. Like his eyes like widened and then they all like fell back on each other. And we were like in the Black Canyon. They were scared.
What's that?
That thing happens sometimes.
I think it's seven. I think it's supposed to start seven or eight or something.
I always have in your visa sort of like, like, like point scoring of like these douching it up more.
This reminds me of South Park when they're picking which uh, which uh mascot they want. It's kind of, kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, I thought we, this was like a three man thing, yeah. If if we do have a late night, it would long ahead of us.
Yeah.
Or or if they don't want them, can we move on to other things?
I prefer that.
I'll split the minor one then, I noticed that we are scheduled for in the Thursday before mountain fair, which has not happened.
He didn't give us a time limit.
So I, I think it's worth just recapping some of those last comments since Bob and Randall stepped out about. Jesse, your comments about the fire marshal, um, so I think that'd be helpful.
Bob, and I know, I know you mentioned it, I just wanted to reiterate, I believe you mentioned, um, that you were gonna get. The referral comments from the fire jurisdiction as far as the exterior wall for the existing structure on lot A.
Yes, uh, that's related to condition number three. We're requesting that that condition be removed and we deal with the building official. On that issue when we go for a building permit. Our process would be to work with the fire department and say, is this in fact your concern? If we've got fifteen feet between the buildings, does that address it to your satisfaction? If they say yes, great, if they say no, then we're done. If they say yes, Aaron still has the final word, so we would go to Aaron and say, Aaron, we talked to Billy Gavett and he's okay. Can you live with this and we'll get an answer from him one way or the other. We just haven't, this just came up and we haven't had a chance to have that work with him. And we remember a drawing, we remember.
Right.
Don't wanna see something, but.
Well, he won't cuz he's retired, but Carl will. So, yes.
Tomato tomato.
Right, right.
Okay, guys, um, what do you got? Okay.
Sound good? Okay. Thank you for discussing it and.
Like if if there is gonna be a irrigation easement on this property. The the ditch goes out into Euclid and runs in front of lot A. So like a little clarity on where you see that easement at versus them just going into the ditch when it's in front of lot A.
Good question.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't think we can really enforce, uh, you know, a private easement running through a neighboring property. I think that's kind of, that's on you guys if you wanna put, if you wanna put an easement between on lot B. For lot A to service the ditch, so I don't, I don't think that's really in our. For us to decide for you guys, but it's an option for you guys if you wanna think about it to make sure that lot A can get irrigation water.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, right, for sure. So, yeah, and I mean, I, it sounds like for the most part, uh, I don't think any of us are really. Really stuck on number three, uh, the condition with the fire resistant wall within five feet. Is anybody, does, does anybody have a desire to talk about that further or do we all feel like that's something that can be omitted? Do we all feel like that's something that can be omitted from this?
Um, would it be good to omit or do you just modify it to Bob's words of saying that they will go? Uh, it'll, it'll fall to police chief and building official or did strike it?
I think, I think strike it, that's, that's kind of a building permit process is to get it approved. Right. So I think, I think we, personally, I think we can just omit it just because, you know, he'll have to work through that uh during the building permit.
I agree. Strike it. I agree.
Cindy, what do you think?
I agree. Strike it.
Good.
Well, sweet, then yeah, we'll, we'll get rid of three, but then we'll also add um that other condition. That we had talked about regarding the no, no sale of. Uh, Lot B uh prior to. The improvements made to the residential structure on Lot A.
Or. Determine that that house. Variance proves. The house I want preserved is worth preserving, yes. Or if the house is disney.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's all torn down, then we, it automatically gets reset to just the standard setbacks. Um, and so then the, the whole variance regarding the setbacks doesn't, doesn't even matter anymore, I suppose.
Yeah, that's right. You lose your existing non-conforming status. If you tear it in the house. Or substantially, substantially change the house.
I just want clarity on this ditch piece that. Uh, A will be able to access A ditch and put their own pump in.
So or both lots will have access.
That's.
I think is the, the clarification.
That is the, that is the intent and there's two ways to achieve it. And, and I'm not the public works director, so I can't tell you whether he would permit. A irrigation, a ditch irrigation line running through either the alley or. Um, Euclid have right-of-way. If he would not permit that, and then uh there would likely need to be a. Private easement allowing for that irrigation. Line and or pump to be run from. The irrigation, from the ditch across Lot B for the benefit of Lot A.
And we could make a condition to the satisfaction of the public works director before the building permit on Lot A. That access to irrigation water will be resolved.
Yeah. Um, cause yeah, I, I don't wanna speak for the public works, but I don't think they're gonna want uh power running from Lot A. Into the right-of-way, going to a pump in the irrigation ditch. So I'm, I'm not really sure how well that would, would, would jive with public works. Um, so, you know, I think that. To, to keep it clean, I think that it would have to go through, um, through the property.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where it is in the uh right-of-way in front of Lot A. But it is in the right-of-way in front of Lot A. So whether it's putting a. Pump on Lot A that goes into it as it goes across Lot A or whether it requires. Uh, an easement that crosses Lot B, we can work that out with Kevin, that's.
Totally, yeah. Yeah, so we, none of us feel like that has, I mean, that's not really anything that we're gonna include as a condition or anything like that for this approval.
Like it's the same issue that you're looking at, it, it, stop, stop an argument between the two lots.
Yeah, I think it's, it's kind of a gift and carbon now, right? We all get, we all get some ditch water. And so to produce, to, to ensure that. Um, you know, it's, it's, we're not gonna say how, we're not gonna stipulate methods or means. But to say that, that, you know, to the point of, of Kevin, um, however he wants it to happen. It's a, I think a, a good box to check. To the point of the other piece that we were just talking about, you know, it's just like keeps it clean, closes it up.
Yeah, sorry, I guess I'm just struggling with this because it's, you know, it's kind of. Private use of, I mean, if they, if, pretty much if they go and talk, a- after this gets approved. And they go talk to Kevin and Kevin's like, oh yeah, no, you can't run electric or the water, water through. The right-of-way, then they'll be like, oh, well, okay, we better get an easement. We better just have a signed easement agreement. Between the two properties that, that. That easement is there. That doesn't necessarily have to be platted with this subdivision.
So.
I guess I'm not looking to plat it with this. I'm, I'm looking to specify in language, it's just that it's, it will be done, that, that both lots will have access to ditch water. It's, it's, to me, it's, I think it's as simple as that, just.
Whatever the agreement is upon the, the lots that they will have shared access is like up to them to determine, but.
Yeah.
Still the protection of access to both lots.
And it, and it allows, you know, before the sale to, to decide, decide how that works, you know, so it isn't saying, again, we aren't trying to say. You know, where those pumps go or where the lines go. It could be all up to the owner, but it's the, at the end of the day that. The downtime property, it has access to that for irrigation.
Right, and that's, that's what Bob had mentioned too, is that like.
Right.
They will work with the public's, public works.
Yeah.
To determine whatever the best approach to that is.
And Jay, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, are, are you kinda saying it's not our responsibility or within our scope to determine?
Right.
Ditch access for Lot A, that's.
Exactly. It's out of our scope, it's out of our purview. It's not our responsibility to figure out public. Use or private use of, I, I don't even know if. I mean, is it, who has rights to the ditch? Is it adjacent properties? Or properties that have the ditch running through it and that's that? Or is there additional ditch rights for people who aren't adjacent to the ditch?
That's exactly. Drive around Old Town, you'll see.
It's different for every. Yeah.
Structures where there's four or five or more houses.
Yeah.
That are sneaking across in the absence of any easements, but. They may be implied easements just because they've been in, in use for so long.
Right.
Perfectly comfortable with having to bring a solution to get irrigation water to Lot A that satisfies Kevin.
Great.
Whether it's taking it right out in front of the property out of Euclid or whether it's creating an easement. Let's go figure that out before we do a building permit.
Great.
Great.
Sure. So then, so then you guys do wanna have it as a condition then?
Yeah.
That's a yes.
Yes. Sure, yes. I, I, I like Bob's idea. I think it sounds great.
Okay.
Go up to public works, but make sure it's done.
So in the end, there's a community benefit to entering that, that property on fourth and Euclid has water to keep plants green and to then keep things growing.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm totally in support of it. I guess I'm just not sure if it's. In our purview.
I think we're splitting lots.
Jared? Is it in our purview?
It is. I don't think um it would be right to dictate the method that that is achieved. So I do like how um. That method is being left up to the town. Uh, to, to say whether it's acceptable to run through the public right-of-way or whether that has to be a private agreement. So I, I think that's fine, but I do think um the intent of, of providing both lots with access to ditch irrigation is. Is within your guys' purview.
I think we. I might be speaking uh for people here, but I think we all agree that like we understand like what is going to happen with this property. With these two lots potentially, right? I think Nick and I are definitely on the, the same page of like, what if? You know, there is a neighborly dispute and I think that's the only thing we're really trying to look out for here. We're not trying to encumber anybody. We're just trying to make sure that. If things don't go as they are currently planned, that they are looked out for.
Right, yeah.
All good.
And I just wanted to, could, you know, reiterate what Nick said about. Awesome job, like, you know, I think it's a great solution to getting some more housing downtown, so.
What else do we have here? Are we?
Yeah, um, do we have any other comments regarding any of the other conditions?
No.
Cindy, Nick?
Nope, I don't have any. I think it's great. I think it would be a great project.
I have one question for the applicant. Can you tell us about the seller? I've always wondered what's in that, how deep it is. Sorry, I just, just, I have to ask. Okay. Okay, I, I've always imagined it was just like, just a football field underneath there, just like cool stuff. It would be. Okay.
When you go, let me know. I wanna check it out too.
Well, tha- that's exactly the thing. There's, you know, like the, the Illuminati collect down there and then, you know.
We just wanted it on record, thank you.
That's great. I, I've been wondering for years, literally. Um, that's really funny. That's great. I, I think, I think it feels like we've kind of touched all the things that need to be touched. Uh, thank you all for, for walking through this with us. It seems very clean right now and um I'd be ready to make a motion if we all felt. It was the appropriate time or do you have other things we need to go through here?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to work through cause we have additional conditions now that we're adding and we're removing number three, so.
I've, I've drafted up.
Perfect.
Two options, listening to what you guys were saying, um, that I can put out there as recommendations if you'd like.
That sounds great.
So striking number three, which would make all the. New, all the existing ones move up a number, so a new condition number seven. Which states Lot B cannot be sold until the portions of the existing residential structure on Lot A. Are removed from Lot B and the site setback. Yeah, are removed from the, from Lot B and the site setback. Um, and.
It's removing the addition on Lot A. And then tell me the part about B.
So Lot B cannot be sold. Until the portions of the existing residential structure. On Lot A.
The outbuilding can remain, right?
Have been remedied to.
Setback variance. Cause it's not even on Lot B.
It's only in the setback. Right.
But just to, just for clarity, the outbuilding can remain on Lot B if the seller chooses to keep the outbuilding, right?
Or a building permit on Lot B can be issued. Uh, those uh would be in the proposed setbacks, so they would need to be relocated.
Got it.
In the area that's encumbered by the future setback on Lot B. So before that building can get built on. I think that's condition number two or one. That needs to be addressed.
Yes, it's number two.
And we're still, we're still sticking with before sale, not um within a specified period of time of sale?
Before sale.
Okay.
And then a new number eight, both Lot A and B will have access to ditch irrigation. The method of which will be approved by the town's public works director.
Exclamation point.
Well, they're gonna love that.
Great. So how do we, Jay, on this one?
I mean, that's, I, I feel good about it. Personally, I don't know how everybody else is feeling about it. I feel like we've really kind of, I feel like we've ironed out the stuff that I was concerned about personally.
Great. You guys all feel good?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
How do we move this? Do we say the amended resolution one?
Yep, as, as amended.
And that encompasses everything? We don't have to address the special conditions or anything like that?
I would just say as amended in the town's deliberation.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve uh resolution one. Series of twenty twenty-four as amended in. Town discussion.
Second.
Jared made the motion. Nicholas seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
Thank you guys.
Exciting stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Looking forward to seeing it. Yeah, absolutely.
We'll, uh, we'll be in touch about that seller.
Seller shots.
I need to uh to leave to go have beer therapy with you guys, but before I go, I just wanna wholeheartedly endorse Jared's proposed. Amendments due DC for inclusionary zoning. I think he did a great job on those.
Awesome, thanks, Bob.
Deal. Have a good night, guys.
Enjoy therapy.
Alright, you guys ready to dive into the next one? Yeah, you guys came into the longest meeting in a while.
This one's gonna go late.
What's that?
That was me too.
This would be good if you just wanna.
Hey guys, I, I just wanna say thank you. I know those are, we got into some details there. I, I do think it's nice to leave a clean scenario. For both the owner and future, not, not knowing what's gonna happen, crazier things have happened, right?
Totally agree, Nick. That's absolutely right.
Well, the, the legacy, the precedent, you know, I mean, I, I think this allows.
What's that?
A future P and Z, a future, you know, Jared's job to be easier if there was more of this. Um, what's up?
Oh, I was just saying you have a copy. She's handing some stuff out.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank you all for letting us get into those, those nitty-gritties. I think it was time well spent.
That was thorough. I, 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 I appreciated that, cause I don't know how many, I'm sure you've worked on plenty of projects where it's like, oh, they should, why'd they do that? That doesn't make any sense.
Totally.
It's just so you guys know my interior, that just need to know background, so totally. You know, like the worst was like, well, someone else did that and I keep them happy.
We've, uh, we've spent a lot of time deliberating precedent, I think, in here and uh.
I think we're getting better.
We're getting a lot better.
Getting better.
Yeah. And I never have any issue with establishing precedent like that. I think those are. Those are things that we need to take care of. Those, we have a very volatile construction market and so like if they're, if, right, is always such a big thing here.
Yes.
Because things change so drastically, so I'll have no complaints ever about deliberating things.
Well, that one was easy too, because I think we all know that it was a good project, a good application. Had, had a good intent. It'll have a, hopefully a good future. I love seeing Jeff sitting over there. I, I think it was just like, it was a good package, so.
It was the home team.
It was the home team.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it was, um, yeah, good stuff. And diagrams.
Yeah.
Infographics.
Alright, notes. Last action item. Continued public hearing for the Community Housing Inclusionary Requirements Code Text Amendment.
I move to continue.
We got a motion on the table.
Whoa.
So I guess. I, I don't wanna kinda go back in time too much. We did include everything that was intended to be attached. Indiligent for this one, so you at least had the information, but um.
Appreciate it, thank you.
This, this has been kind of discussed um for some time now. Um, and, and the essence of it is updating the town's. Community housing inclusionary requirements or kind of inclusionary zoning and it's the portion of residential developments. That um are required to provide deed restricted housing units through two different methods. One is. Income restricted, deed restricted housing units and the. One is income restricted, deed restricted housing units, and the other is resident occupancy restricted. And the town's current code requires those that any units, or any developments, residential developments over four units are required to mitigate the total number of units at twenty-five percent, or twenty percent for income restricted units, and that income restriction is either eighty to one hundred and fifty percent of the area median income, and it follows this cycle outlined in the UDC. Of the remaining units, twenty percent of those are required to be deed restricted for resident occupancy only. So it doesn't include price cap restrictions, income restrictions. The only qualification necessary is that you qualify as a local resident. You work a certain number of hours within the roaring fork drainage, and you meet that requirement and continue to meet that requirement. So we've kind of discussed this, and I apologize for the existing commissioners, but part of this is for the new commissioners as well. We've discussed this at a number of meetings, as you saw outlined in the, in the staff memo, and I don't want to go through each one, but recently there were two kind of meetings where a lot of discussions kind of occurred on this. At the May ninth meeting, we had a few members of the development community participate in a, what I'd say was a great conversation with the planning zoning commission about the proposed regulations, and some concerns were raised about rental housing already being achieved at that higher AMI rate, the hundred and fifty percent AMI, and some concerns being raised about decreasing the exemption, increasing the mitigation rates. And there was a lot of discussion about trying to pursue some, some different methods of considering mitigation. After that meeting, the planning zoning commission had a work session with the board of trustees on general topics, and this topic was discussed, and the reason this was discussed was because it was really the board of trustees directive to start the conversation at a reduction, at an exemption reduction from five to four, and to mitigation increase from twenty percent to twenty-five percent. So at that meeting, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, those of you who were there, I think what we heard loud and clear was the trustee said, "We're really open to differing solutions." What we do kind of believe is that there is some additional capacity for private development to help the town achieve affordable housing goals, but we don't want to kill new development with having very onerous restrictions. And there was definitely support for considering, I guess what we'll call cascading regulations, and trying to break down the mitigation based on the size of the development. So a lot of what is in this memo is the same information that was presented previously, and I felt it was kind of important with new commissioners and also kind of keeping that public record. What's really changed is starting on page five of the staff memo, where I kind of discuss a lot of the changes that were made. And so kind of going through it briefly, applicability, we kept the reduction, the exemption reduction from five to four that has cascaded through to the exemptions section, kind of modifying the proposed language, and a lot of this is, this draft proposed language is in attachment A to the staff memo. The real changes start in kind of that section three, which is the residential development mitigation requirements. Trying to summarize this down, what was being proposed, or what is being proposed before you guys tonight, is that four unit developments, so one to three unit developments exempt, four unit developments would be required to mitigate twenty-five percent of their units, or one unit, as a resident occupancy restricted unit. Then moving up to developments of five or six units, it will use the existing code calculation of twenty percent and twenty percent for AMI and RO restrictions. Developments of seven to nine units in size would increase the mitigation from twenty percent to twenty-five percent for the income restricted, the AMI units, and keep the RO unit mitigation rate of twenty percent the same. And then the larger developments, ten units or greater, would increase both AMI and RO to twenty-five percent. The one caveat in there is that when we increase the AMI mitigation to twenty-five percent, we also increase the bedroom percentage, so the current code has a fifteen percent of the total bedrooms need to be included. That increases commensurate five percent to twenty percent, and so trying to keep those ratios very aligned as we increase that, and so what I've included also is just a mitigation scenario, just trying to show you what a development would need to provide based on its project size from, I just arbitrarily picked five to fifteen units, just to show an example, how option one would be our current code, twenty and twenty percent. Option two would be twenty percent AMI, twenty-five percent RO. Option three, twenty-five percent AMI, twenty percent RO, and option four, twenty-five and twenty-five. And so those are really each of the mitigation types we're looking at, and you can just see how it does or does not impact ultimately what that project would have to provide. After this went out, the infographics, we heard loud and clear that some of you would like to see something maybe a little more visual that helps represent this. And so Ellie worked today, and that's why it wasn't in your packet, on some of these, and they don't show every situation, but I think the goal is to kind of say, here are some different ways that we could provide this, probably not within the UDC, but as kind of additional information when people ask about, what does that mitigation look like, or at future meetings with this group or with the BOT, we can include this to kind of help demonstrate how a mitigation would look like based on the size of a development. So kind of coming back to the proposed changes, the reason we incentivized, or the reason we moved the AMI category up for the seven to nine unit developments over the, the RO was that staff kind of believes that there's greater community value in having the AMI units as opposed to the RO units, and providing more pathways for local families and households to purchase deed restricted housing. So we felt if we were going to increase one of the two by five percent, there's probably greater value to the community having the AMI be increased first on those midsize projects, and then the RO unit kind of come after that being increased. And so that's why the seven to nine has a AMI category increase, and you don't have that commensurate increase in RO until the ten plus unit development. So we heard loud and clear a lot of Bob's comments. I reread the language that was proposed for the for rent developments, and after rereading it, I completely agree with all of you that it was a little confusing, so I tried to reorganize it and simplify it down to make it a bit more clear for someone reading the code to understand, and so I broke what was previously there into essentially three subsections, D, E, and F. D being how do we address for rent developments, strictly for rent developments? And I put in there essentially language that does what we currently do today. You're required to provide AMI units. You are not required to provide RO units. Then I included a new section, oh, and in addition, I heard the hundred and fifty percent AMI, and we added a new sentence which basically says, the sequencing outlined remains at the exact same sequencing, with the exception of for rent projects replaces the category four unit, hundred and fifty percent AMI, with a category one unit, eighty percent AMI. So the new sequence is eighty, one hundred, or one hundred eighty, one twenty, eighty, one hundred eighty, one twenty, eighty. So we're getting an additional lower income rental, as opposed to getting an additional higher income rental. Subsection E discusses those mixed development situations, and it basically states that for sale project, that developments consisting of for sale and for rent, meet the respective requirements. The for sale units meet the for sale requirements, the for rent meet the for rent, and that's how it would be considered. And then lastly was the conversion from for rent to for sale. This section states that you can do it. Essentially, all of the existing deed restrictions would have to be replaced with new deed restrictions because their restrictions are different between a for rent and a for sale. In addition, the development would have to provide whatever the additional mitigation requirements are to comply with the code at the time of the conversion. And then lastly, the mitigation would continue the sequencing wherever the prior sequencing ended. And so if the development required a one hundred percent and an eighty percent AMI unit, and then conversion would require one additional, it wouldn't start at a hundred, it would be in a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So it would just kind of continue that sequencing cycle wherever that ended. Continuing on with the association HOA dues, it sounded like there wasn't a lot of support for what we had previously included, which kind of capped that, so I just struck that section completely. We did, we did continue the modification to change the term employee dwelling unit to community housing unit, just because that is the term that's used throughout these regulations. And then lastly, nothing really changed in the definition section. That was what was previously proposed. Of course, I assume there'll be at least one or two. It's a little confusing. Yes.
I live in a deed restricted. I live in a building where the developer really screwed the community, and the town of Carbondale, which is now run by Garfield County, did not make sure there was a reserve account. Is there anything that can be done about that? So basically, the people that owned it were able to rent it in trade for when it turned over to first sale. There was no reserve account, so all the employee units paying five hundred dollar monthly dues. So I don't know how that benefits employee housing. So it's just the one thing that I had a question about. All the other things you put in there regarding making sure that equal units were built and all of that, I mean, awesome job. But I don't know if there's a way, but I mean, that just, you know, I'm in deed, so I'm not, like I, like some of the employee housing units, which, you know, they're four hundred thousand dollar units, they shouldn't be paying five hundred dollar dues. And I know that's all across Carbondale. So somebody who can't afford a huge assessment, you know, because the people before didn't set it up for success and compound the dues over time. That's just a question. I don't, I'm new, so I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I, I think there's, it, it's, it's tough, and we might need some additional legal input on this. I think there could be the inclusion of, in this HOA homeowners association dues and assessment section at five eleven seven, we could include the requirement that a reserve study, a reserve plan, and a reserve fund is set up at the outset of the development, which would hopefully ward off those situations where there, those just weren't considered ever, and now ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, there is no reserve fund, and current property owners are having to deal with, how do we pay for those improvements? The alternative method could be that that could be located within our community housing guidelines. And I'm trying to remember if there is a section that discusses reserve funds or not, but.
There, there is a section, if they're following, I forget, I'm drawing total mind blank right now as it's late. There is a, you know, code that you have to follow for state of Colorado when you are a community, and a lot of the documents aren't up to date, so if there's just something regarding that, I think that in itself, if it was monitored, right, like who's monitoring it, who's making sure? We're in the middle of that in my situation and other situations that same thing we did with this property, just due diligence, you know? So making sure that the bylaws are following the state codes that are in place to protect homeowners.
Yep, and, and that's COIA, the Colorado Common Interest
Thank you.
Community Act.
C O I A, yeah.
And, and so, yes, you know, I, I think there is that. Unfortunately, a lot of these changes would only affect us moving forward. They're really tough to be applied retroactively because deed restrictions are kind of a lock in time, but it doesn't mean that there aren't situations where deed restrictions could be updated and at the time of a deed restricted units transfer, that a new deed restriction gets applied. And so, you know, I, I think that that would probably, the more I kind of noodle on it a little bit, that might be better within the community housing guidelines, referencing COIA standards, requiring that as opposed to putting it in, how do we mitigate development and provide just, ensure that we're getting the deed restricted units? Yeah.
Yeah. I'm a little, so just, just to that point, and I think it's a very good point that you bring up. HOA dues and special assessments are definitely a gentrification agent and need to be considered, but I don't know how to address that realistically. Do you, I mean, is there any precedent, I mean, talking about precedent, is there any precedent for reduced HOA dues for deed restricted houses, units in a, in a multifamily project, or exemption of special assessment or reduced special assessment dues? I mean, how have you seen that play out in the past?
So our current code requires that there's a commensurate dues reduction and assessment reduction based on the size or the size of the units when compared to the free market units. And so, you know, in, in your standard condominium units, it might just be your assessed one, whatever, you know, one rate for all units, and this code discusses that being reduced, I'm trying to navigate between two pages, that being reduced for the deed restricted units, so that they aren't being charged as much as the free market units. In the prior code language that we proposed, we put a self-admitted arbitrary cap on that saying, regardless of the size differentiation, it can be no more than seventy-five percent of that of the free market unit. There was really no math behind why seventy-five percent. I just picked a number out of thin air. So that would be a way, and that would be kind of going back to what we had previously discussed. Yeah, so I don't know if that answers your question, Nick.
I don't know that it does. I don't know that there is a real answer. I mean, if a roof needs to be replaced and there isn't enough money in the coffers, how do you handle that situation? How do you handle that situation? Realistic, that's a real life, real world scenario. I just don't know how to address it realistically. It's a serious problem though.
Which I mean, I feel like this is something that. We're aware of. I think it's more just that like, at this point, we don't, we don't have a team. In regards to, you know, affordable housing. And so, and it seems like the Board of Trustees, they do want that at some point. And I think that, you know, that is a direction that, you know, once we actually have staff that are dedicated for. For affordable housing, then this is something that they can tackle. I think as of right now, since we're just partnered with Picking County. Or sorry, Garfield County.
One thing that Garfield County is doing, which is great, is they are take if you are paying assessments or dues that are. Pushed to a reserve study, and I don't know if that language can go in here or into the community housing standards. But that, that amount, if the homeowner is tracking it. Can go into the purchase of the home. So the value of the home goes up. You know, based on that amount of money they've contributed. So it's still really difficult for the people in that situation at that time that are, you know. Most of them barely paying their rent, their mortgage or their rent.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I keep going back to an employee housing mitigation program, something similar to what we've seen at Valley. It's really just a tax on people who build really big houses. And it goes into a fund and maybe that's an offset.
Yeah, I mean, like RVR did such a good job with the houses that are. Yeah, right? The houses that like their dues cover the. The dues cover the painting of the house and some of the exterior work and the roofs and stuff. I mean, that was a really good example.
Anyway, I, I don't want to deviate too far from what you're presenting, Jared. I apologize, but I do think that this is something that's worth discussion at some later date.
Jared, I had a question. Is there a compliance manager that the town plans to, at one point you think bring on board?
No, that's you, isn't it?
Or, yeah, would that be you?
So kind of process wise, so like this code. You know, is dealt with by the planning staff at the time of development. So it's part of. Application processes demonstrate to us how you're mitigating. Housing, how you're providing, where these units are located. So that's all included in development applications. As far as the management of the deed restrictions and like the logistics of approving resales and all that. We contract with Garfield County Housing Authority on that. And so. In theory, yes, there is compliance. In actual practice. It is very limited because we have essentially one staff member within Garfield County Housing. Managing the lottery process, the qualification process. Sales, setting maximum resale. And so they have some staff constraints as well. A lot of the stuff that the town is talking about, potentially changing within. Community housing guidelines, adding more enforcement or checks or kind of. More standards to how we manage these would likely require increased staffing. Whether that's in town staffing or whether that's Garfield County Housing staffing, that's all yet to be determined. So. I think there's probably some small wiggle room that. Existing staff could probably handle, but if we're talking about larger compliance. Processes or things like that, that's probably beyond combined staff capacities.
Volunteers are always welcome.
Jared, I did want to say, I, I do appreciate how much thought and time you put into this. I do really like the way you've kind of broken. I, I, I find that the way you broke it up for the five and six units and the seven, eight, nine. And ten plus, I, I really like the way that that kind of turned out just because, yeah, we were concerned about. That whole cutoff rate there at those lower numbers. So personally, I, 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 I think that looks, that looks great. I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but.
So just to confirm, when we see you're rounding up essentially though.
Yes, how the code reads is all fractional units follow standard rounding. So five and greater rounds up. Four and less rounds down. And, and again, those infographics, they are not covering all examples. It's more of. Showing you just what that twenty-five percent mitigation, if you guys think those are valuable, we're more than happy to kind of. Revise those so it shows what each one of these categories being presented. Would produce. You just heard some visual aids might help with some of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Technical logistics of municipal code.
I mean, I, I think, yes, they're, they're very helpful. Only one request in the future, no black writing on blue colors.
That was my comment.
Just for old eyes.
That was not Ellie's fault. This is America themed for tonight.
It is very America.
We'll get non America colors. Thank you. Thank you.
So are we, are we diving into the weeds on this or are we, or is it, is it already basically approved? Or, or is it, is it open for discussion?
I mean, I think. Is there anything within these changes that you're, that you're thinking isn't. Of, isn't adequate or?
Well, no, I mean, it, it's certainly adequate. I'm, I mean, as I've always said, I am not in favor. Of revising to reduce the number of residential units that trigger housing mitigation from developments with five units or more to those with four units or more. I think ultimately what that will, the unintended consequence with that change is less units in Carbondale.
Yes.
And I, and I don't think that we should place the burden on small developers. To, to foot the bill on, 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 on. Affordable housing units.
If, if I could actually build that for a second, Nick, unless. No, no, because I, because I actually, and I don't. You know, I, I say so things sometimes and I don't want to say this incorrectly to, to offend anybody. It isn't that, I, I agree with that and not because I'm against affordable housing. No, I think it's, I think it's a character and a scale thing. And I think if, if. I'm trying to find my words here, so. Sorry, bear with me. To next point of putting, putting the pressure on small scale development. I, I do believe that all development can, can help this process. But I, I guess I was hoping to see a little bit more of a curve that, that. That helped small. In my mind, character appropriate, you know, local responses to small lots. In a way that, that wasn't having to carry the same burden mathematically as. Carbondale Center Place.
So I am curious because as of right now, if you're, if you're four units. The only thing you're being required is that one of them has to be resident owner occupied.
Right, which I appreciate the, the creativity there.
Is it RO or API?
So I like that we, that Jared, I, because what I heard from, from, from bot was. Let's try different, let's bring in multiple Crayolas. Let's just not use just one color on this one, but try to.
Yeah.
Kind of weave them a little bit more DNA.
And you know, I feel like we're really kind of, almost in a way, kind of like sure we are okay with going up to. Enforcing it, but at the same time, I think there's a lot of resistance to it of having that be then be required to have one. Affordable housing unit within four. And I think this, I think this is a good compromise to say that, hey, the Board of Trustees, we're pushing it, but at the same time. You know, there is, we're not, we're not, we're not quite there. Right? Right.
Just a friendly reminder, can you guys put in on your mics for us folks who's decided to stay at home?
Sorry, that's me.
Thank you.
I just said that, you know, that means you, you know, you get, you get an employee in there, but it's, it doesn't hurt the investor, the developer. Financially with a, with a deed restricted.
And I'm, and I'm admittedly, this is, this is not my strong suit of knowledge. So I also want to be, you know, kind of transparent there. I'm just. And the other piece is I literally came back a couple of weeks ago from a small scale developer conference in Bend. Trying to understand how small scale development can decouple from the big stuff that we're seeing, you know, the. And not be pushed into the same bucket there. I, I know a few folks locally right now, who I'm not affiliated with professionally, so just to be clear, who are trying to do very cool things. And, and I know they're right up against it. You know, and it's, and it isn't that I'm trying to take anything away from anybody. It's, it's. It's a philosophical thing that is about what can we give to our community in the macro? It, it, and so with that. I believe there's like a, a give and take on that larger scale where it's tough for me to see that small scale. Folks who are trying to be creative and do stuff that's a real good fit. I'm not calling it funky, I'm calling it nice character, nice appropriate character, good quality for this community. Yeah, I think you all, does that make sense? Does that, so I'm, I'm trying to figure that out, you know, because, because you know. I, I, I don't know how this would scale up for CCP or, you know, whatever. And this is going to be in the future. But I think knowing that other side, those can carry a little bit more of it. And the smaller guys, you know, they are, it's, it's. It is tough. It is, is, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room there. So I, I'm wondering if there's one more crown we can pull out. Or if it's asking too much. And, and because I, I do appreciate this, Jared, I think this is, this is really great. My head's spinning just trying to metabolize everything that's in front of me, so.
Yeah, I felt the same way.
But I dig it.
Yeah, and by no means. This, this was honestly just my first attempt to try to capture this. Cascading concept, right? And so I tried, you know, I tried to put some thought into it to make sure it might be reasonable, but. You know, if, if there's something else that you guys feel is missing, please, you know, I think it, it. It will be helpful. I think. One thing that would be helpful for myself and, you know, kind of. The process moving forward is when we say. Small scale development, when we say medium scale development, what, what.
Threshold.
What are those numbers really being?
Yeah.
Is small scale really four and under or is it six and under? I think that's where. I'm kind of throwing some darts at the board, picking some of these numbers and trying to say. Is that small scale or is that medium or is that large scale? You know, I, I think on the ten plus units, I didn't go kind of above that. Just because I hadn't heard. Really any support from anybody about pursuing thirty percent mitigation, let's say, or something like that. And so. I just kind of said, well, if we're jumping up, maybe that ten percent's appropriate, but. You know, I wouldn't be concerned if you say, hey, maybe five or six units. We want to break those out and treat those a little bit differently, or maybe we want to move. The numbers up and it's five, six and seven, then eight, nine and ten, and then eleven, twelve, like. I, I'm very open and I'm open to different solutions. What I will tell you is we have had conversations with developers with our current regulations that say. We're going to do a four unit development, not a five unit development.
Right.
Right.
And we've had developers come in since they've seen some of these changes and say, we're going to do a three unit development.
Right.
Not a four unit development because. Want to provide that. And so I think no matter what number we pick, there's always going to be that incentive to be. Just under. And that was kind of maybe the thought process of saying, well, if the financial hit to the developer. Is significantly less by only being an RO unit versus an AMI unit. Maybe you can ward off some of those situations where a developer says. No, it still makes sense for our financials to do the four unit development if one of them is RO because we're going to get. I don't know, I'm making up a number ninety percent back on our costs.
So, so Jared, here's, here's another, here's another scenario that I'm sure you guys have thought of. Developers are just going to move to another town. And maybe they'll just move to another state and they'll just not be interested in doing any development at all. And you're not going to hear about those people. And then, you know, what about, you know, is, is there going to be some sort of clawback effort? By town of Carbondale to go to, you know, if these changes do actually take place. Is town of Carbondale going to go to the existing four unit developments and start requiring. Affordable housing in twenty-five percent? Or sorry, yeah, in twenty-five percent of those units or, and vice versa for, you know, right on up the ladder. For all, you know, medium and large scale developments as well?
No, it, it's really only once a new development occurs. And so if someone owns a. Let's say a single family home on a lot and they want to redevelop that single family home to a. Four unit development. In this instance, one of those units would have to be RO.
So they're not going to do a clawback effort today. They might do it in the future, but not today.
Correct. Not how these current regulations are, are written. There's no. Attempt to go after existing developments and require people to deed restrict units.
That would be messy.
I think that's what I'm hearing you ask, Nick.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Did you guys talk about upping the percentage if it goes over ten units, over fifteen units? In the past?
We looked at situations that included thirty percent mitigation and in the staff memo. On page four, there's some scenarios using some existing developments that have occurred. Carbondale Center Place, twelve oh one main, Main Street Marketplace. Those total number of units and how they would have required mitigation if there was a thirty percent. So. Not, not in recommended code language, but just in kind of the general discussion, we at least looked at what those numbers would be and. Again, I didn't really hear much in the way of support for pursuing that. And so. I kind of left that thirty percent off the table.
Well, I think that was reinforced with our meeting with bot as well.
Denmark, yeah.
Yeah. And, and in some ways, the rounding up does get to thirty percent. It did certain, I mean, it's, it's inconsistent, but it, it touches that. It's some scenarios.
Yeah, and I think you can see that in.
Sorry, I think you can see that in some of those infographics where it's like, well, if you're doing. Four units, five units or six units, it's the same mitigation rate and don't quote me on those numbers, but. And, and so I think, you know, the, the code is how it's written, no matter how it's written, it's going to incentivize. A developer saying, okay, if I'm going to have to bump up to that next number of units I'm going to have to mitigate. Do I shoot for a five unit development or seven unit development because I'm going to, I'm going to provide the same number of units that I'm mitigating? And that exists under today's code, just like it would exist under whatever future code is. And, and I know it's late nine eleven, right? I, we've discussed this a bunch. I know it's a lot of information, you know, I don't. I, we've discussed this a bunch. I know it's a lot of information, you know, I don't think there's any. Harm or concern with continuing this to a future meeting if you guys don't feel comfortable. But I, i- if that is the direction you all want to go. I'd at least want some sort of direction on what you'd like to see back at a future meeting so that we can. Make sure that we're responding to that or providing some additional clarification if needed.
I think, I think the thing that I'm struggling with this is that. I don't know, we're not, we're not professionals in affordable housing. Like this is us attempting to bump it up, still be reasonable. And sure, we are kind of, you know. Shooting into the dark with what those numbers are for what is low, what is medium, what is high density, like. What it is, but I honestly, I think it's a, I think it's a really. I think it's a solid attempt, but I mean, if we really wanted to dial this in tighter. I mean, I think we're just going to keep sitting around and talking about the same things. Without having a, without having a professional that helps guide us.
That thing's been buzzing, everybody's. Yeah, I, I think it's well said, Jayce. I almost feel like we just needs, need to test it against a pro forma. Somebody else needs to do that for us, you know, it's like, what shakes out? But I mean. It's, it's a tough moment. I, Jared, I, I think the, and the work is great. I mean, that, that needs to be said again. I'm. Like I said, you've broken my brain with it. I appreciate that. Um, thanks. I really do appreciate what people do that. I think my, the only thing I could say, you know, like critically, I'm not going to say the critical of you, but critically of like this, this process is. We, we so often are using. Units. As the, the scaler in this, right? And, and there are, there are other metrics to bring in, which would make this one hell of a bucket of soup. You know, if you start bringing in lot size or, you know, other kinds of densities or other kinds of like, you know, pieces to this. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to throw that, that in there, but I, I, I do wonder, you know, is, is that. Again, as someone who is, who is incredibly not the knowledge on, on. This. I'm just, again, I'm thinking about scale and character here, and I'm trying to figure out what is, you know, how do we thread the needle on? Getting folks who, who need. The help, you know, balancing that out. Um, affordability in this crazy, crazy times, and at the same time. Reinforcing what? Local Carbondale is so many folks, so that, so that not only folks want to stay here. But great folks want to come here. And good developers want to develop here. You know, that's, that's kind of the. That's the sauce, right?
I, I, I agree. I think scale, ability and. Character are very important, Nick. Um, and Jay, to your point, you know, we're, none of us are professionals and a lot of us, you know. Aren't working in affordable housing, um, day to day. Maybe we'd like to and just can't break into it. But in any case. But in any case. Shy of hiring a professional and sending out an RFP for a professional to respond to this. Issue that we're talking about. I mean, can we? Find our own precedent studies, our own small towns that are similar to, you know. Our town in size and character and, and look at their codes. I mean, I know that we're doing a little bit of that just in the Roaring Fork Valley. But can we broaden our scope and look at? Towns, um, beyond, beyond our Roaring Fork Valley and really take a good hard study at how they're handling. The problems well or not handling the problems well.
I, 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 I guess personally, I'm kind of leaning towards. Um, and this is just kind of my thought on this is that. What if we were to, uh?
Is there a town?
You guys, you guys are recommending to move to continue the public hearing.
Yes, I would say yes.
Really, or are you guys?
All right. Oh, no, sorry. I was, I saw the bottom, I saw the bottom. I didn't.
Yeah, we, we've included both options fully expecting that it could go.
Totally.
Either way.
I mean, personally, I, I was, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards this idea of that, yes, we moved to recommend this to move forward towards the, to the board of trustees, but then also giving them this kind of caveat that. Hey, listen, like, if we really want to dial in. Affordable housing, this isn't something that. We're going to do.
But the second we have, the second we make the recommendation. It'll go through bot. And because there's so much to do and we have such limited staff and there is a mountain. It's, it's just going, I mean, just to be realistic, right? It, it, it's going to get. It's going to roll for five, 10 years.
Right. But I mean, so then at least we're kind of bumping up the numbers that to where we're, you know, staying more standard with other communities. Cause as of right now, it seems like we're getting. Kind of low.
No, I don't think so.
Grandpa Nick.
I love it. Uh, what, what, what is your comparative, Nick? What do you have?
Well, I, I think that what I'm hearing is that, you know, the. Our adjacent towns, say Basalt and Glenwood, we're right smack in the middle. We're not high or low. Um, and if we extend our search, we may find that we're not low at all. That's my guess. I haven't done that study. Nobody's done that study. So. That's my guess.
Didn't you, didn't you have a collection of like Salida and?
Yeah. So we included and it's attachment F here. Um, we. We, we looked in and, and. I will, I will tell you right now that it is really difficult. To summarize some of these communities. Inclusionary zoning requirements into something that fits on a. On, on a eight and a half by 11 or two eight and a half by elevens. They are, I, I think to what you guys are saying. This is a meaty topic and, and, and I hear you, but we did look at Aspen, Basalt, Glenwood. Vale, Avon, Eagle, Salida, Crested Butte, Steamboat, Newcastle, Rifle, Garfield County, Picking County and Eagle County. And so, um, to, to Nick's point, you know, I think our current regulations are. Relatively similar to what say Glenwood Springs and. Basalt have. Yet. I would say that they're. You know, a bit less than. Some other communities like a Crested Butte, a Steamboat. Obviously Aspen and Vale and, and some of the, the more resort oriented and, and.
You don't have the ski mountain.
And I, I recognize that. Um, I think with that being said. You know, given that I am not an affordable housing expert, nor do I work in this field on a day in, day out basis. You know, we kind of took. The trustees' direction as kind of that. Current barometer of where we want to head and we're trying to kind of work within. That, right? Um, and I agree with, with both of you guys that. You know, if we really want. A much deeper dive, it's going to take some outside resources to, to do some. Pretty heady analysis and really focus on pro formas and how this is really going to impact. And then all of that will be thrown out the window in. Two weeks because the entire. Uh, cost of construction adjusts or whatever that might be, right? So. You know, I wouldn't say we're, we're completely falling behind, but. I would say that the regulations we have are starting to. Trend maybe towards the lower end of that middle. Segment.
Where did Salida come in? Like, what, didn't mention Salida.
Salida, uh, requires it for multi-family residential projects of five or more units. Um, and.
Sixteen.
It looks like it's about sixteen and a half percent. Um, of their total number of dwelling units. And if I remember Salida's, there was some. There was some funky math in there to, to get to that. And so we kind of tried to average it out, but. But yeah, I mean, I, I think to, to some of those comments and Nick to, or Nicholas to your comment, like. Yeah, there are completely different ways. And if you look at what. Vale and Avon and Crested Butte do, it's all based on employee generation and they use a bunch of. Mitigation factors to turn, to turn basically square footage into employee housing units and. They, they don't care. They'll charge rates and they'll collect money for all development. And so your large, single family multimillion dollar homes are paying into the fee as well. And. And when we first kind of looked at this during work sessions, we heard loud and clear from. The trustees and from the planning commission that. There wasn't really a desire to look at that more complex. There was really a desire to keep Carbondale's policy. Oriented towards the simpler. Way of calculating it and the more easy to understand. And so. Being honest with you guys, I didn't even pursue any of those.
Yeah.
You know, square footage calculations, um, or, or dive too deep into them.
I would like to see a community or employee housing mitigation program in Town of Carbondale. I think that's worth pursuing. I think it's worth drafting as a proposal. For a draft too.
Nick, I think that that is, that is a goal of, um, the board of trustees. For sure. That's definitely, especially with their project, you know, right across the street here. You know, that's.
Yeah.
Kind of tied into that, that if they do that, they need to do that. And so I think they're kind of in a pickle to where they're, they're feeling the pressure that that's the direction that we have to go. Which I don't know, in, in a way, I'm. I'm feeling a little, I guess I'm feeling a little lost as to, you know.
Yeah.
What, uh, what we can do here.
Yeah. I mean, this, this is great, but it doesn't shift it that much. You know, so, and the cost of living is so high. So how, you know, without that affordable housing base. I mean, I think that would be more efficient of people's time. The calculation of, you know. Getting the housing in instead of putting it on the developers all the time. And then you just get a couple of units.
It's hard. Yep.
Yeah, that's right. We're already shutting in. Granted, you know, our potential projects right now are limited in town, you know, our infill opportunities. But then we haven't even looked at the other side of what people are asking for current lots, which further blows this thing to kingdom come, you know? And again, that's, that's not our job or, or town's staff's job to figure that out, right? Thank goodness. Oh my goodness.
I mean. I hope we could continue this conversation.
Okay, how about this? So, so if we're going to continue this. What is it that we need to find success? What, what is it that we need as a commission here? To, you know, I think that's, that's where I'm stuck. Like, like, cause, cause I, I simultaneously don't feel satiated. Again, no, no offense. If anything, I'm overrun by you guys. Uh, but I, but I, but I don't know how, like, I'm not satiated, but I, I don't know what I want to grab out of the fridge. You know, it's like, what else do we need at this point? Cause I, I, I can't point a finger at it. Other than saying, yes, Nick, like, uh, an affordable housing task force or a thing that isn't actually coming, you know? So is there, does someone have an idea on, like, is there a realistic? Set a, a goal, goals, items, information that would help us feel like we could. Put our, you know, our stamp on this and send it up?
Get rid of one and two.
Get rid of what?
One and two.
What's that mean?
Uh, sorry. Page five of seven. Updated proposed regulations, regulation one, UDC five point eleven point two. This section is revised to reduce the number of residential units that trigger housing mitigation for developments with five units. Or more to those with four units or more. Strike it.
Wait, wait, uh, one and two.
So leave it at five units. Don't reduce it to four units.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then that's. I'm not sure that makes me entirely. No, because all, but all it's, all that's happening there is an RO with it, with that.
Okay. So then add RO to it. If it's really no burden on the potential developer, you know, and we can demonstrate that, then I'd be okay with one and two.
I have a question. It might help my naivety here. Uh, can someone just, just explicitly describe the, our implications of an RO unit to me?
Yep. So, uh, resident owner occupied unit or RO unit is a deed restricted unit. The deed restriction, um, does not include any limitations on sales.
Right.
Maximum sale price on capital improvements being added to it. Um, the only limitations. The major limitations are, um, that the, uh, person purchasing said unit. Needs to be qualified. As a local resident that includes restrictions on. Short work. Um, you have to work a certain number of hours within the community. You have to live here. There's restrictions on. Short-term renting, uh, that's prohibited. But, but really the, the limitation, and you have to live in it as your primary residence. I'm sure there's something I'm missing, but.
Think nine months out of the year is what they have to.
The year. I live, I live in one, so I signed the contract. You, nine months of the year and you, if you choose to, you know. Possibly move, you can, you can request a one-year rent, but there's no short-term availability. And, and you have to get approval to do the one-year rent. So basically you're working and living. Here, but there's no cap to the, the appreciation of the unit.
And, and your household can earn.
There's nothing.
Unlimited, you could earn a million dollars a year and still purchase that. You can have.
You got people coming in to live there that work here.
Right.
Can you invest in other properties in the state of Colorado or in the Roaring Fork Valley?
Not in the Roaring Fork Valley, but yes, elsewhere in. The, uh, world.
Yes.
Can we make that a hundred percent?
You could have a rental property in Denver, for instance.
Gotcha. Okay. And then that one-year rental. Is that one year for the entirety of your, of ownership? Or is that one year for every 10 years or?
It's, it doesn't really say, you basically go and say, hey, I'm going to go teach somewhere else, for instance, for a year. Is it okay if I rent my place? You can possibly get the second year, but they, they, they don't, they're not, they don't, really don't want you to do any of that. And we had to kick someone, we had to get someone out that we caught renting and Garfield County took it very seriously.
The, the intent is not that you are living here and then you're renting it out and then you're.
Yeah.
Living here, then you're renting it out. It's really for people to live here. Full time, right?
Not to make a profit.
Is it, uh, working within the bounds of Garfield County or can they work remote for a company outside of?
It's paying, basically paying taxes in the Roaring Fork Valley. So it's Picking, Garfield. Eagle.
Oh, huh. So if I'm living in an, and I, I can't work for Amazon.
No.
Online. Okay.
You, yes, it's, it's limitation on remote working and. I just, my mind just went blank.
I had to prove that I paid taxes. In Garfield County.
And for self-employed individuals, there are. Pathways to get qualified. So if you're working for a traditional employer. Um, like Amazon, that'd probably be a no. If you're working for, you know, the fire, Basalt Fire or excuse me, Roaring Fork Fire.
I have my own business. I had to supply all my business documents showing that I work in the valley.
So that one's check. Got it. Thanks. I confirmed it. Anything lingering, guys? I mean, this is, this is that moment to just, because I mean, how is we getting past this one, right? Like this is one of those ones. It's, it's great. We know it's good. It's never going to be perfect.
Yeah.
I know we're hung up on the number of like five or four. I just drove around town. I just drove around town on Google. There's really not a lot of five unit developments. Four and three and two. So like, are we really? Including the the necessary amount of housing that we want to see in this valley. We don't really have much space to do five unit.
There will be turnover.
So but I'm just, I'm just curious, like, if that's something that we want to really, like, look into and consider is like. We don't have the scale for it. So do we adjust the scale or is the scale fine the way it is? But again, I don't see a lot of. I don't see a lot of properties in town that would be able to fit the five, you know, they'd fit the four.
Right. And is there is there any way to incentivize the lots ratio? Lot ratio to unit issue, you know?
Incentivize density. Yes, I think generally speaking, uh our zoning codes do not have a lot of density restrictions. A residential low density.
Our residential low density and residential medium density zone districts do have some. A residential medium density, just by the fact that it requires a certain number of lot area. But residential high density, it's really whatever you can build within the confines and park. So there is no um limitations there. So, you know, I think. Yes, you could look at a residential medium density change to encourage more density. Unfortunately, none of those would impact any of our P U Ds which make up. The vast majority of residential development here in Carbondale. Those are all uh existing zone districts that these just regulations would not apply to.
Which is a separate topic, right? But what if there is incentive for variance? Based on you switch to these new incentive, these new guidelines and then you say, you know, hey, developer. Come to us with a good idea and we might make a variance on a a property. Because if you do put up five or six, seven units, they make more money, you get more employee housing units.
And and that's essentially what. P U Ds are. It's that kind of negotiation of, you know, we'll give you more density or different restrictions for. Improved benefits and um I think the town has actively tried to move away from those, especially on small. Individual lots, as as you'll see up on that zoning map, there's some properties there where. We have a P U D for a single property for that kind of exact situation. And I think. In those situations, it's it's probably better for the town just to consider changing the zone district. Than it would be to do a lot of those one off negotiations.
So then this is hand in hand with that.
Correct, I think it is. Um, I think it's just kind of a a chicken and egg type situation.
Double line.
Um, and I know it's something that we have talked about, you know, how can you have developer incentives? That maybe provide pathways for the town to partner with this. That's probably gonna come in some additional conversations. We got some grant funding to look at some. Um incentivizing all affordable projects and there might be some outcomes of that that could be. Applied to going above and beyond or for applied to smaller projects, but I don't want to. Presume what that process is gonna recommend to the town.
How do we advocate for the reincorporation of? Oh, I just drew a blank. Township pretty much uh right by eighty two in the river. What is the name of that? It's a tank. How do we, how do we bribe them back into our town?
I don't know if it's so much bribing.
But how do we?
There's a mutual desire for both entities to be separate. I don't think they want to be a part of Carbondale and I don't know if Carbondale wants to tank necessarily.
We're good. Uh, yeah, let's just, so how do we, how do we? Put a pin in this thing or I'm sorry, button it up.
I mean, so I guess, does does. Does anybody have a request that is a reason why we should move this to continue?
Nick made one. He he's been honest about his his feelings with the the numbers. That's the only one we've heard so far.
And that was in regards to number one and number two. Which was just from the five units to four units and then also the.
Essentially just reducing the exemption from four units down to three units and making four unit developments mitigate.
Personally, I this is, this is kind of where I I feel like that was a pretty strong request by the Board of Trustees that they want to see it go from five to four. And I feel like we're already compromising by saying we're just doing R O for that for that one.
But I actually really like it. I thought it was a good, a good compromise.
No, I do too. I I really like that. Um, and I think honestly, I think the Board of Trustees would would buy it too. So I really, I really like that you guys came up with that. I thought that's that's a great idea. But you know, I guess that's kind of where. Nice. Um, yeah, I guess that's that's kind of where I'm feeling is like that. This is kind of comfort. It's it's pushing the board to, it's giving the board of trustees what they want, but also with a little bit of flair that. We are trying, we're trying to give them something more than just those those number, those numbers that they were looking for. So. You know, I personally, I think we've we've done the extent that we can do. Without having a a professional that really knows affordable housing steps in and and really dials this in. That's my, that's my personal opinion.
Can argue that.
I agree.
The thing I want, I can't get and I can't really even verify, because again, it's like what what you're saying, Jay. I I look at the the right column of and then the bottom one of ten. Where I see three of ten units goes to affordable. Just in just knowing that my firm is a lot of, does a notable amount of developer work. I can just see that breaking pro formas. And and just impacting the quality of 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 stock that we get. That's that's anecdotal. I I can't prove it here and now. I'm not building those pro formas. But that's just where I'm hung up, I think, you know, and then so and then and so that with that, I'm actually saying I'm ready to move on. Because I I don't believe that personally, I can say that I can bring anything more to this conversation.
And you know, I think that that is uh, that's one of the problems with keeping this simple. Like keeping this with simple percentages, you know, we are gonna have those numbers that just in some places like, oh, a ten. Yeah, that doesn't work there. We're gonna go down to a nine or we're gonna go up or, you know, there's gonna be those weird spots. When we keep this simple. If we make it more complicated, you can probably iron some of those out. But are we the ones to figure that out? I don't think we are.
No. At the end of the day, the developer always choose the path that fits. Their pro forma, their vision, their their loan, their whatever, right? So they're gonna see this and they're gonna be like, well, no, of course, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build nine or I'm gonna build eight, whatever, you know. So it it isn't worth us banging our heads at nine forty uh over this thing. Unless anybody, again, I I I do want to respect if anybody has a great idea or a lip ball moment, I think it's great to hear it, including. You guys like if, but I'm guessing you've banged your head on this thing, both of you, um or banged, you know, Ellie's head while you copied her notes.
Nick, what do you, I just wanna, I know that you're can, you're the one that's really pushed back the most on any of these and I just wanted to see what. Are, is, how do you feel about this going down to four units with it just being an R O, being that. Uh, the Board of Trustees actually just or asked us to bring it from five to four. That one of those had to be affordable housing.
I mean, okay, I you know, I you know, I don't not, I'm not on board with it. I mean, you don't get this back. This, we never go back, you never backpedal from this. I mean, I, there are other solutions. I think again, if we started, you know. Taxing people who build big houses. And put that into a fund that offsets, you know. Employee housing on community housing, that's a better solution than placing the burden on developers. That's my opinion. I'm sticking to it. Um, if everybody else says, you know, let's give, let's give the Board of Trustees what they want. Then go ahead, but I'm not interested in giving the Board of Trustees what they want just because that's what they ask for. I'm interested in solving the problem in the right way. But I'm kind of with Nick on this. I don't know what else to add to the conversation either.
It's a tough one, right?
It's impossible. I mean, who's doing this?
Design professionals sitting in this room right now with big brains that are like exhausted on this thing. So that's why, that's why I'm like ready to motion, you know, I I think we've all done our best with this and we we can't squeeze anything else out of it. Tax the rich.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Tax the rich.
Can that be the recommendation?
I'm kidding, for anyone who's listening.
It's not about that. It's about the 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 cost of living and the people that come in. And who's li- who's liable to to create the employee housing? Who who's liable to help staff? Is it the town that should be staffing? Is it developer that should be staffing? The the housing for the staff, where 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 should it be the tax? You know, so it's spread out.
I think that just goes way above.
So I think.
Planning, yeah.
Over pay grade. Well, I I think if I can jump in, I don't think there's any harm in your guys' recommendation. Regardless of what the code language says that you believe that there's. An appropriate step in this is to pursue some form of taxing to help fund affordable housing initiatives, right? Like, you can be as specific or as general as you want.
And and a qualified expert review.
And you could definitely recommend that, that, you know, you think there needs to be some sort of, whether it's. Hiring someone to do a pro forma or um, you know, some other expert. And I think that's all within your guys' purview. To send that recommendation up to the trustees and they can do with it what they want. But as far as. Asking the voters to tax themselves, that's a a trustee level decision. That's not a anybody in this room decision and. But but I don't think that message would be lost on them, especially if you're saying. Look, even with this, we still have concerns about the smaller developments. And we don't know if this is exactly the right way, but we think. Some additional partnership and some additional funding to help with that partnership would help. Us maybe pursue some more of these options. So you're not just sticking it to what we're viewing as the small developer. Um, or we're not negatively. Guiding people towards a three unit development when what we really want is a four unit development there. So I think those are all very good recommendations and. Part of what we'll try to capture regardless of what the recommendation is, that this was some of the discussion and these were some of the concerns. Brought forth by this group.
I I'm new. I personally think it's a great plan, but I agree with what everyone's saying. I mean, it's like you don't want to get stuck in. All of a sudden, you see all these three unit spaces.
I guess, I guess, I don't know, I'm caught up with. That fourth unit just being R O, like, I don't see that as really that.
Doing anything.
No, it doesn't help the little guys.
It I it's it's something that we're benefiting from, because we actually had, it's, you know, there's. Actually, I I just don't see how it's going to bring us from four four units to three units. Like, is it really a big ask of a developer?
No, it's not, but it but it does keep things, it keeps things local.
Right.
There's there's the sidecar benefit.
So I I.
So that's why I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
It's a step. Right? I mean.
Right.
We, I I think we've got to accept that this is gonna be a baby step process for many years to come. We've been at the blender in the last few years. So much has changed. I actually, to be to go out on a little bit of a limb. I think it's very challenging to do any of this in our current situation with 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 construction and and material prices and. Everything is so blown out of the water right now that it's like, we are, we are making policy decisions or recommendations. On a level of shifting sands, but I'm just not comfortable with. I I I don't know, I mean, you know, who who know who's to say. We don't.
To be honest, what we're proposing right now, we're probably not gonna see any projects. That this applies to for another couple of years due to construction costs.
Right.
So we're trying to predict something in five years.
Because I mean, if we look at the lots that we all know that are for sale right now, none of those lots at their asking prices. Or even what they would go to will be able to build with or without these changes. It's 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 unless someone comes in with a Goldilocks project for some, you know, on some other, this is my other wave. So. Honestly, we are just, we are beginning to lay the the bedding for hopefully, you know. A continued like an iterative process that is done by people who know more about this than us.
Is it crazy to send the have that that this work up and say that, you know? That you've done the work, you've showing the work, it's incredible amount of work, but that 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 we're not. Don't feel comfortable backing it based on everything we've been talking about.
Yeah, that's the smartest thing to say. We do not, you know, as a group, have the expertise to make informed decisions on these matters. Hire an expert.
Well, yeah, but I also, I also, I also don't want to, that that in some ways, I feel like we're not giving, I mean, the amount of. Effort and stuff is put in on this. I I feel like that that is a little bit of a a limp response, you know.
Well, it's it's an appropriate response. I I I mean, I I don't. It's a it's a professional response. Uh, it's it's, you know, what one would say. As a professional. Right?
I I think that the way that Jared kind of described that he would present it to them, I think that sounds. I I think that was a great summary of it to where, yes, this is, this is the best that we could do. It's. Very, very thoroughly thought out. That being said, this isn't tackling the problem.
Yes.
And this is as best as, I mean, this is, this is what you're gonna get without hiring. Unaffordable housing professional to really create. A dial plan for your town.
And I'm 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 very happy to go with the group. If you want to just.
I'll go.
Well, well, with one and two, like with regard to one and two, like my. My gripe with one and two, you know, I'm perfectly happy to, you know, if if to reach, in order to reach a consensus, if you just want to add. R O to that, R O language to one and two, I vote, I vote, I vote in favor of that.
Yeah, that's um, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing.
Do it. Let's do it. Let's send it up the poll.
For for a conversation, right?
Yeah, for B O T to make decisions on, you know, our recommendation.
The next steps for this for the new commissioners would be, we would renotice a public hearing before the Board of Trustees. We'd present all the same information as well as your guys' formal recommendation, any additional dialogue. Try to capture it to the greatest extent possible and um allow the Board of Trustees to hold a public hearing. Consider the code changes.
Is public hearing.
Yeah, but that's how it is, what happens.
Right, I know, I know, but like even a a little more push into the community about it.
And 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 we'll do that. We'll re um, we we send it out. We initially sent this information out to about five hundred. Uh, people who have submitted for building permits within the town of Carbondale in the last five or so years. We'll resend that out. We also reach out specifically to. The development community that has worked within Carbondale in the last five years. People have submitted larger land use application, so. We would do that same outreach before this happens, goes before the Board of Trustees and sometimes people for prefer to. Provide their comments at the Board of Trustees versus the planning commission. And so maybe more people show up, maybe they don't, but. Yeah.
Due diligence.
Okay, so let's just, let's put down some notes for the trustees to send this up with. We just put those down to help them, they don't have to listen to two hours of. We just put those down to help them, so they don't have to listen to two hours of circling.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So what, is what I heard from the bot in our last, was to be clear about our, our comments, right? Like if we're setting up comments, put them, put them, put them in.
Yep.
So our, our comments are number one, if, if I could be so bold as to kind of try to summarize.
Tax the rich.
Tax the rich. Uh, no, well, I guess so, some sort of. Some sort of like the taxation component. Number two, a specific uh entity that is well-trained and knowledgeable and experienced in this realm of affordable housing. Um, number three, identify the current situation that is, that is, you know, somewhat. How, how do we identify this post-COVID era of material costs, construction costs and. You know, it's, it's a, we'll say, I know, the new normal, you know? I know, it's, it's a crappy term.
Just got over not hearing that.
Hmm?
I said, I just got over not hearing that.
It's called the damn panic, by the way.
So those, so those are, that's what, three or four items we have to send up to them? Is there anything else anybody wants to, that I've?
Um, well, the, the concern of, you know, upping the numbers equals. Lowering the amount that they build.
You're gonna get less units in Carbondale.
Less units.
There's an unintended consequence. I mean, I don't know how you put that in.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the community housing inclusionary requirements.
Right.
Right.
Text. Maybe that's just understood unwritten.
That's all I've got. That's all I've heard.
I would say just the only thing that I would say to that thing, Nick, that's spot on. The only thing I would say is we don't want to call it a tax. I thought we, I think we want to call it a funding program.
Yeah, yeah.
Because tax is just like.
I think Jared was literally gonna say tax those rich bastards.
Tax the dirty rich.
Quote unquote.
Quote unquote, yeah. Yeah, well said. Thank you, Nick. Good. Thank you for cleaning that up.
Housing use. Funding.
So, I mean, employee, yeah, community housing. So mitigation program is literally what they call it, of value.
If, if I could, I um, you know, knowing the time it is, um. You guys could make a motion on this and I'd be happy to come back with some additional language regarding that. Those kind of thoughts that we could discuss at a future meeting. There will be future meetings before this even gets scheduled for. Board of trustees and so I'm happy to kind of work on these four kind of comments and bring that back to you guys for your blessing. If that's something that you feel.
So is that?
Would be appropriate.
So to continue. Still motioning to continue or motioning to send to board trustees with amended language?
Either way.
If we recommended to move forward, then you can move forward with scheduling of.
A public hearing.
Of a public hearing with the board of trustees.
Well over a month away before that would even be heard before the trustees, so we could come back at a future meeting and say. Look, we want to make sure that we have this language correct.
If we want to meet before Act Mountain Fair.
We will probably have a meeting before the P and Z before this goes before the board of trustees. Regardless of whether we meet before or after Mountain Fair. Big event. And so alternatively, alternatively, you guys could continue it and we could come back with that language and. Um, it, it's, it's six, one and a half dozen the other.
Right.
Um, if we're going with the continuation, I mean, it's, yeah.
My preference is to move to continue.
Okay.
Continue.
Yep.
Okay.
One more round.
Continue. I'd like to hear Jared what you put out. I'd like to hear what you've got before we approve it, so.
Sounds good.
Great.
Tax the rich. That's all I've got.
Yep.
I, I do have one, one comment that I, I would, I'd like just say maybe, and maybe you all can bat this on if you don't like it. Um, I appreciate the precedence, Jared, that you went and collected at different communities. But I do believe, this is again, sorry to be philosophical at P and Z meetings. Carbondale is, is a one-off. We are one. Um, I would much rather us, rather than comparing ourselves to Salida. Or whoever else, just like I believe as an individual, I'd rather compete against myself than somebody else. Cause they are not, they do not have the situations or the, 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 the stuff that I have. You're right, so Carbondale has a unique environment, a unique context. It's got its own stuff and so I think it's very important for us to also just like put that on when we're doing this. I, I, and, and rather than saying, oh, we're behind this person or we're, we're, you know, I don't want to compete with basalt. I don't want to compete with anybody else. I want to compete with ourselves and do the best we can comparatively to what we've done. I want to do better than we've done in the past, just according to our own metrics. If that's, that, that's just my me is kind of being kind of open and real.
I'm with you on that and the only thing I would push back against a little bit is that we don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, case studies exist.
They do, yeah. Presidents exist and then we can look at them and be informed by them. But at the end of the day, you know, we, we only, we only actually have to, to look ourselves in the mirror as a community.
I agree. I agree. We're a very unique community here. I'm with you a hundred percent on that.
We're funky. No, we're not.
The funny thing is, is I feel like the, the projects that I've really appreciated uh that have been involved with affordable housing. This didn't even apply for because they were just going, they were going all in.
I know, right.
Like the, the one over by the high school. That one's awesome. The one over here by the third street center, that's awesome. The one over by Satank.
Yep.
That one's awesome. They did a great job with all those and. Yeah.
What size are all those? They're right around eighteen to twenty units, right? Ones that you just all mentioned, they're all around the same size.
Yeah, no, no, fifty, yeah, fifty is the new, the new one up by the high school.
Yeah, yes, the other ones are in that eighteen, twenty-ish range.
It just took someone to give a shit is what, it's what it comes down to.
Right.
Right, and it, it took, it took, it takes someone to care enough and to, you know. All right, it's eight fifty, nine fifty-eight.
All right, so I guess, did, did Jared make that motion?
Move to continue the public hearing to July twenty-fifth.
Jared made the motion and Nicholas seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
Next we have step updates.
Um, next meeting's canceled.
Great, no meeting.
July eleventh. With that being said, wanted to discuss with you guys, that would pretty much be a month if we keep the July twenty. Fifth meeting canceled. Um, it would be over a month of not having a meeting. The next meeting would be August eighth. Is there a desire to have a July twenty-fifth meeting to potentially? Fine-tune this recommendation or if anything else comes up? Or would you guys like to keep that uh meeting canceled as we had discussed last November? Really leaving it up to you guys. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other.
I mean, I guess my, my only concern is that we won't have the attendees that we want for that discussion.
I was just, I was gonna be real and say I have company coming in town for Mountain Fair and I probably cannot. Was it, you know, based on our, our previous, you know, kind of choice of that.
I thought you were getting addressed.
Those things happen concurrently. They're bringing the dresses. Now, I mean, I, I could see a, 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 a reality where we do one of those wham-bams that we did last time. Where we, where it's like just something, like maybe we're, we all even, I don't know, I don't know if we can do this, this is asking too much, but. If it was no, like just to be able to review Jared's, you know, what you're, what you're doing there. And tie a, tie a bow on that and it takes us a few minutes.
Yeah.
Is that even, is that possible?
On July twenty-fifth?
Not be able, not look at anything else.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm just putting that out there.
It would be possible, I just know that this was a meaty conversation. I'd hate for this to be another meaty conversation.
Right.
If we're trying to do something quick, um, that would be my only concern with that.
But it's eighth is the next one you said.
Yeah, but it does make me think that we will need to amend that last motion that was just made. I don't think.
Oh, yeah.
And it needs to be continued to a date certain because I do not want to re-notice this public hearing for.
Okay. Writing. So do we strike that motion or do we amend it?
Just go to August eighth.
To the next.
August eighth.
Is, is, is anybody against going, taking a break and going to August eighth, your midsummer sabbatical?
It's fine.
Fine.
Okay, okay. You guys could vote to strike that last motion and I think best would be to rescind the last vote. Have a vote on that and then make a motion to continue the public hearing. And we can try to stay as close to Robert's rules of order as I can remember at this hour.
I mean, who's Robert?
So Bobby's rules of order.
Strike the previous motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
So now move to continue the public hearing to August eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the effort. Yeah, we've got nothing else, especially at this time. We'll email you. By the way, there's new commissioners who have joined the planning commission tonight. Thank you both for showing up and participating. They, they are all marathons like this one.
Yeah, they, this is, this is a pretty thorough.
We haven't had a ton of clocker in over, over a year.
Good to know, good to know.
They will have to adjourn.
Show up to the first one.
Yeah, this is not how it always goes.
At least we get a month break now.
Commissioner update.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much.
Night.
Have a good night.
Motion to adjourn.